Ako na sulu. Ako na. Ako na stos. No stos. Sko. Mwastwa na ndoka. Ako na... Oh, Lysiamga stwa. Oh, osa Ruth.
Are you fine with this one?
Osa Ruth weyimata tachaka. Yano, tla ba lema tataka hori, lebatwa keta ma libon ba mupilewa. Aba monatika lelimile, skapa toloka dius. Eh, baba bediba kamumu muleme, lebaba bediba kamu ujek. Aras seripu pura sesa muhaya, baru. Le na kikesa bitireela sagasi monati. My colleagues... At least ina ono kanakunseba ova.
My colleagues don't understand me, eh, our language. So we must, eh, when we gossip about them both, the two on the right and two on the left, they won't hear a thing.
Marugirile skapa toloka soz. Ay, ndadu tlan kabanya lebatwa. Otlangihira, kama swakilele gilewa otlangihira. Wakai tsutumela.
I greet you all.
Eh, my name is Ntibimudise. Ntibumudise Kina Jani.
I am the member of parliament.
Kelelo kula parliamente.
I look like one, right?
Eh, do I look like one? Kimonala yam?
Kerahor kimuntke.
Eh, I'm, I'm, I'm handsome.
Le skapa tawakukuwa kimuntke. Yeah, you must say so. Don't, don't be scared.
Mopile mo fela kinni omuntke, skapa tolo.
Eh, welcome to our public hearing.
Kiala mokhe la mokopa noyarona.
Eh, I want to first apologize for starting a bit late.
Kerata hokupa maitato, muntke niyaku simula thari.
We were scheduled to start at ten.
Nakoyaro na, ene ele ura yabo leso me, ene swanetsu kusimula kayone.
But I must assure you, at ten we were here.
Kati ne rinalifano.
And there were about five people.
Inele bat baba tlanu fela.
Well, we wanted to proceed with the five.
Eh, fela rinalibaki lekusimula lebona ba baba tlanuruzwelepelelebo.
Then we got information that some of you are still on your way.
Rab, eh, fiwamola itzawa hori, eh, le sanza lelitsilela tla.
Eh, today is Sunday.
Khumpie no kela tzipi.
It's going to be a very nice day. I'm going to tell you a story about this school.
Eh, etlo na letsazi lelimonati, ke na lekhang ekele tsharete nyonama babilis kolo se.
Yeah, eh, but before we start with the business of today's meeting.
Pelerisimula ka, kiroyarona yaletsachi.
I want to request that all gentlemen should remove their heads and we all rise.
Ke rataku ikuela khobore hori, eh, ba rule, eh, re mekama utu.
So that we sing the national anthem.
Re, re opele, pina yasichab.
(Singing) Hosisi delele Afrika, Maluka Ezeu Kononayo. Israhimetana Soyezu. Hosisi delela China, Nisa Pola Yo. Ude la buluka si chabasa Ezeu. Ude lisele tchali maswene.
Usi buluke.
Usi buluke si chabasa Ezeu. Si chabasa, South Africa, South Africa. Eti shofan monse nira, Eti tigera vanonzi. Kusir de hehebeles, Anikranse Anukiri. South of all to come together and united we shall stand. Let us live as one, Africa, in South Africa.
Thank you very much.
Eh, ra leboha.
Let me take this opportunity to introduce to you members of parliament who are seated here today.
Erigetseshuwe kiluisi si, maloko a, paramente alintinfano.
These are all members of the portfolio committee of forestry, fisheries and environment.
Yanu a ke maloko a komiti, ya botshara tlapi, ya di, ya tikuloho.
Lirika.
Lirika. Eh, also kureseka otoloko mbleleka otus.
Yeah, yeah. Eh, on my left is Honorable Phillips. She's a member of the committee representing the DA.
O alimo letohunla melamo lema ki leloko Phillips. Wemete lekoko la DA.
Next to her is Honorable Mkunu, a member of the committee representing the ANC.
O alimo haufilene eke moto tcharek Mkunu, wemete lekoko la ANC.
On my right is Honorable Kancho, a member of the committee representing the ANC.
Mo letohunla melamo jake moto tcharek Kancho, wemete lekoko la ANC.
On the far right is Honorable Paulson, a member of the committee representing the Economic Freedom Fighters.
Eh, o alin kwa bofelo kwa ke moto tcharek Paulsone, yena wemete lekoko la Freedom Fighters.
Economic Freedom Fighters.
Economic Freedom Fighters.
Eh, maybe we must remove "I" at the right time.
Eh, retitosa "II" monako ngai, emale.
But that's like a "FF".
But that's like a "FF".
Retlatinyaplas.
Eh, maybe we can add "plus" at the end.
Eh, we have an apology of Honorable Mutambi, who's a member of the ANC.
Rinalima itato a, modula stulo, eh, moto tcharek Mutambi, oelele lo kula ANC.
We have an apology of Honorable Brian, who's a member of the DA.
Moto tcharek Brian, oelele lo kula DA.
An apology of Honorable Weber, who's a member of the DA.
Le, leloko Weber, oelele lo kula DA.
An apology of Honorable Holomisa, who's a member of the UTM.
Eh, moto tcharek Holomisa, oelele lo kula UTM.
Oh, we have an apology of Honorable Mbata, who's a member of the ANC.
Le moto tcharek Mbata, oelele lelo kula ANC.
And Honorable Singh, who's a member of the Inkatha Freedom Party.
Le moto tcharek Singh, elele lo kula Inkatha Freedom Party.
But with that as it may be, now we are here.
Le fa khunsayalo, renarohone.
We have the staff of parliament.
Renalé batlankelepa paramente.
Very beautiful, eh, women and men. Please rise, all of you.
Banala lebasadi baba nkle, baba zwankopa paramente, emang ba lebon.
A very, a very dedicated team of parliamentary staff.
Rabuaka se kopa sesi ma tlaka tla, sesu zwankopa paramente.
Badalu kata di photo.
Eh, batilekole tshadi tshanso.
Eh, bale tshariza motivi.
You are going to be, eh, they are going to shoot photos at you and then you are going to appear on TV as well.
Eh, I am told you are live on 408 parliamentary channel.
Eh, kutla ba eh, hokansua katlamalalo, mo kanaling ya 408, elele ya paramente.
You are on Twitter.
Le tele mo Twitter.
You are on YouTube.
Le mo YouTube.
Eh, and you are on Facebook as well.
Le Facebook, le temfo. Angotokore smile nyana.
Eh, yeah, eh, now it is necessary that you must give a little bit of smile. You don't want to appear on TV with a serious face on a Sunday.
Eh, skala tla mo TV, kasonta ha, kasfatla sesi hahamete.
Yeah, I try as much as possible to smile too.
Le na kitesenyamonyebo nyana mo.
Eh, amongst us, there are department officials.
Eh, mohararona konale batlankeleba ma fa pa, apus.
For the first time, we are told the DDG of Forestry is here. DDG, please rise with your team.
DDG wa lefa paladiwa, odinfah, emela robon, DDG.
Her name is Pumeza Notada. She's a DDG of Forestry. There she is.
Ki olakomorauwa, Pumeza Notada.
We also have the representative of the ministry.
Renalik ke medhi hutsa, eh, kantero, ya Tuna.
Eh, led here by Zoni.
Ye tele tshapili kis Zoni.
Zoni, please rise.
Zoni ema ba kova, ki olazu.
Amongst us, eh, we have councilors.
Renalima councilor, mohararona.
Eh, I believe they are all from, eh, lo, eh, Moses Scottani.
Eh, ke zafurbo klegba, maspala wa Moses Scottani.
Oh, okay, it's fine, even if they are not from Moses Scottani, all councilors, please rise so that we are...
Eh, lefa basatzuko Moses Scottani, elema councilor, lokaya ma, ma councilor, ba lebon.
Okay. Eh, amongst all of us, we are told that, eh, there are pertinent attendees.
Eh, ruthla ba rekhonale, eh, baba tiling, eh, baba rimba ketehe. Eh, mohararona rinalik hosimabi.
Eh, we got Chief Mabi, Hosimabi.
Obatla kuba ma Matutu.
From Matla kuba Matutu tlen. Eh, he's also a member of the provincial house of traditional, eh, authorities.
Le yena ke itukuloyo ya, eh, butati, dwa, ma dwa suhosi.
I'm sure you don't expect the chief to stand up.
Eh, ala sunufela rokosiyemem.
But because I'm standing up, I'll ju-, you can just clap for me. Eh, I'll be the chief.
Na ki emi leka, 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 leka kisa lekofilemo khon.
Yeah, give it to me, I'll be the chief for now.
Eh, ke tanna, ke tanna kosi abone yano. Mohararona konale hosi hasibone.
Chief hasibone.
Obakwena ba, Morare.
From bakwena, Pa Morare. He's also a member of the ex-coya northwest provincial house of traditional authorities.
Le yena otamonu yase hosi, eh, mo northwest.
Eh, Mahosi, this is a journey that started three days ago in Freiberg.
Le tolo, lusimulute, malajale mararo afitile.
And I think we had, eh, three representatives of the House of Traditional Authorities in Freiberg.
Renilelidi ke medhi setaro, za bohosi ko Freiberg.
And Freiberg is in Dr. Ruth Monpati.
Ke, eh, Dr. Ruth, eh, suhomutu Monpati.
So, I, I, I give out the balifetika na mbakwatra lektiwe de kosi yuani, ene tri tri.
Eh, yano tshanezi le, 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 le neba bararo baba raro, le skala fitiwa.
Le feta bako lektimbeg, we were also in lektimbeg yesterday, kona ka mudirimulema.
Naka mudirimulema ke mor nerle temabani, kolaktembeg.
Nogosna di kosi, yano lefeta baale.
Ya, onosna di kosi fo.
Kajukuleba bedi, aleka bedio wa nefela hoof.
Aleka bedio, oale nkaofingani le motengelelelo na.
Yeah, ibenle, iben na tri tri.
Le tla ba le, le, leka na lebona le, le tri tri.
Yona ipo zhor lim, limpe, eh, eh, skunla. Ah, itla ba, eh, it, it won't be a mistake if you give me those ropes as well.
Ngasa alamo. Eh, ngasa alamo, but I'm busy kosi mudise.
I, I can remain, I can remain behind and become Chief Mudise.
Bo kosi buatalo, right?
Eh, to be a chief, you, you, you must have a royal blood, isn't it?
Yeah, so it's an inheritance, am I right?
Eh, kibu swa.
Yeah, so I don't know how, but I'm related to Hosimabi, I don't know, but I'm, so the demo.
I, I don't know how, but eh, I, I, I'm, I'm related to, somehow I'm related to Hosimabi, but I'm, I'm also there.
Yeah, rata, 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 discuss anali, marke, kerahor leads kitiinmu.
Yes.
Labona musi kosi le, labona.
Be aware.
Labona haal.
I'm also there. You can see this, by, by merely looking at me, I look like a chief. I want to assure you that you are not in a wrong meeting.
Eh, kerata khonilite falitza hori, kopano e, ki oneni, lekile mochona, ki ona e nele, libiletsu mochona.
Eh, it is my conviction that when you were invited, you were given proper information.
Falu na lela lediwa, lefilue, talento, emaleba.
Eh, welcome to the public hearings in the northwest.
Eh, rala amochela, moditetong, sasichaba, mo northwest.
Eh, suholu suholu kiamochela, maloko a parliamente ba tama libon. Eh, I would like to, eh, acknowledge the members of parliament who are here. But most importantly, you, the esteemed public.
Batu ba, babu tloka tloka, ke lu na sichaba, le lu na kiala amochela.
All, all the failed fire stakeholders who are here.
Le, eh, ba luan samilelo, baba lintimbochi, ba zaka rolo muntke niyaku luan samilelo, baba lintimkhumpie.
This is going to be a very, this is a very important meeting.
Ke kopano e butloka.
We're going to discuss, eh, how it affects you.
Ritlo kubuisana, re, buaka di lo sedile amang.
How it affects the animals and how it affects the mountains.
Hori di polo holo talona, di ameha jang, di tavadi ameha jang, jalojal.
And we appreciate your support for having to be here.
Re lebohela ke mo inoke niyalona, khonna lona, khonatinkha lona khumpie.
We respect that you had other commitments, but you had to prioritize this meeting.
Re rata hutro tla se u hori, lonale ma baka amang, fela lekhetile, kosa lekropile, kubela ma baka okotoko, lete kopano e.
We are consulting you because we are, we are, we want to amend, we are in a consultation of what we call the National Failed and Fire Bill.
Yanu ke, ritile kubuisana lelona, khonne, khonale molau, wadiwa, liditlaha, eh, wanaha, oh, orata onkutlabulola, kosa kutoka fadiwa.
Yes, eh, rabatla hori, amend that so that, eh, it speaks directly to you.
Rataku kutlabulola molau, oh, hori, o, di, osamahaneli bilu, sedile amang katlamalau.
This is a bill of 1998.
Ke bili kosa molau kaka wa, wa 1998.
Honorable members, in 1998, I was doing a trick in this school.
Ka 1998, kinekilemo itutuwa swanas kolo se.
And the story will continue as we proceed.
Ke tlatakinsikile tlelaka sedindikhangare, tsaritzwelepe.
Honorable Paulson says he was a teacher in this school.
Eh, moto tcharek Paulsona, riyanana rutafa, nele bukta ba.
I'm not sure what was, what was Honorable Phillips doing then.
Aki itzuri, moto tcharek Phillipsi, yena na dirangfa.
Eh, she was working in San City, as a little.
Eh, aryanana, nele mo pepafa atiku San City ku.
Eh, Honorable Mkunu was working in a mine called Swartlep.
Eh, moto tcharek Mkuna ra, yana nalimo mining wa Swartlep.
Honorable Kancho, what were you doing?
Weda me Kancho na udiwa.
She was a tea girl, yeah.
Aryanana, inele, eh, mo, mo, monelanaka kati.
But the importance is that we are now here, this site.
Yanu sesiputloka kurukhumpie norukafala tla kurele.
Now, it sends a message that it is possible.
Yanu seusibonsa hori, kwa khonaha, lamongwe lemongwe akafitlalela, le yena buemojok.
And seated here, there are members of parliament in future.
Yanu ke, le mohararona fa, ba ating, maloko a paramente akamuso, mohararona.
The only position that you can't occupy.
Eh, ma emo, aleman aubaro ukasukhonu khonnaone.
Ke ale a, ka le koshi mabi, le koshi hasibone.
Myself, koshi mabi, kosi.
Hasibone.
Hasibone.
Yeah, those are, that's the only position you can occupy.
No, our, our.
Only three.
Our, eh, debala kaona.
Yeah, and then we can discuss tea girls.
Re kabua, kadi tiye, kmaru.
Swartlep.
And so on.
Swartlep, jalojal. Yeah, but that, that one ele ababararo, kiaro na lebararo. The above mentioned three, no, it's for us only.
Le comfortable lekatabiwa.
Eh, are you happy about it?
Emo suhosin twema.
Yeah, that is a real thing.
It's in the blood, vuro.
We, in us.
Emo madiwa one.
Agir koshma. Eh, is it so, kosi ma?
Yeah, radumalaa.
Yeah, we agree. We are forced by the constitution to be here.
Ke mi molau teo, wanah, constitution, eh, erik, layla, khonne khonne fa.
That in every piece of legislation that we amend, we must consult with the people.
Hori molauana mongwe lemongwe oru tlabulang, kosa oru tutoka fazang, re risanalisi chabapi.
We don't want to sit in Cape Town and take decisions on your behalf about things that affect you in Moses Scottani.
Arerate, khonako Cape Townwa, re letzalele tshweto, kadi lo sedi amanlu na katlamalalo, lonale lemo Moses Scottani, renaligo Cape Townu, eretza tshweto, bat swanetsi kesi, arerate kundirasew.
So you understand better the socio-economic and cultural conditions that affect you here.
Lonak, ke lunale tla waxanyama emo, eh, ama sisi, ah, kubi wankaona, hori, sesela ama yangmo matzelo ngale na, sela ama yangmo ekonomi, jalojal.
In, in one of the public, I think the public hearing yesterday, in, no, it's not yesterday, in Freiberg.
Ko Freiberg, eh, malo.
They told us that, eh, we were sitting in Cape Town, we never thought that fire can reach us.
Eh, rebolalelo zhorriya, lenale zoko Cape Townwa, leketile, halena hanor monloka lifitlala, lele na kwa.
Until parliament burned.
Eh, lenelike, kile ufitlala paramente i cha.
Now, only now we're coming to the people because we realize that fires can also burn parliament.
Ya, wailo onar tanyanlu mapololitsebe, oh, leredana, eh, dikaho taru nadikona koshar.
Yeah, so we are not brought here because parliament has burned down.
Eh, haritli kauri, paramente i chi lebatwa mbi.
Eh, we will also as a committee be visiting, eh, these municipalities to amend the climate change bill.
Yanu ke, ritlo tla mo, eh, profensi ye, riti, rita, rita mo tlenya, eh, bili e amanangli, peto koya ma emo aloabi, elele climate change.
Yeah, climate change affects all of us. It does not only affect the people in the urban areas or in the coastal provinces.
Yanu ke, climate change i amamongwe lemongwe aire, okwa ma hayin, oko di torokon.
So how many blisters is in monlo mo, possibility kore di climate change? Eh, leho, eh, even if you see the blisters on my mouth, it is possible that it's due to climate change. All these other provinces that we have been to, eh, it has been a bit cold and here it's quite warm.
Ke le moni provinsi sedin, eh, khone kusanza no kuli sedidinyana, eh, fanu ke, eh, homhot.
So the journey continues. We started this journey in the Free State.
Simulize Free Statei.
We went to the Northern Cape.
Raya Northern Cape.
We went to Kwazulu Natal.
Raya Kwazulu Natal.
We went to Mpumalanga.
Raya Mpumalanga.
We are now in the Northwest.
Remobu konubupiri.
And this is the last day of our consultations in the Northwest.
Yanu ke, keletsasilarona labo fela khumpie no, eh, la di terisano, la, kosa di teso sasichaba, mo northwest.
There is no rest from here. We are wanted in parliament on Tuesday.
Eh, kutla fo, harikuz, ripwela ape, moraho, kala bobedi, paramente yana.
On Thursday, we are in Limpo.
Kala bone, raya Limpo.
Eh, from Limpo, we are going to Houting.
Kutla Limpo, raya Houting.
From Houting, we are in the Eastern Cape.
Kutla Houting, raya Eastern Cape.
And then we'll go to the Western Cape.
Ebey, raya Western Cape.
And then we want rest, then we start the process of a climate change bill.
Moraho moharikuzi ha, eh, monako ngai kuto ani, resimulaka, eh, bili e ya, climate change.
So if you want to identify potential, you can start now.
Eh, yano fa obatla kubonadi yichunu, simulakona yano.
Eh, eh, ebati wito logi, bomme ba kabu, kabu, baba bedi kamumu muleme, kibo neela baba nyeti, shemai le baba bedi kabatloka, skapa itolo.
Are kisakai tolo.
Yeah.
Baba bedi ba kamumu muleme, kibo neba siyame, a, ba aleka itela ba, eh, eh, itolo gi.
But it is my singular honor to welcome all of you.
Eh, ke motlotlo, kula amochela lotle.
Feel free to participate.
Repang, eh, sosoloha.
Engagers. Engagers.
Buisana lerona.
Eh, it is also my belief that all of you has a copy of the bill.
Ke na litumela kuru mongwe lemongwe kuchere bili fa, dipampirze.
Yes.
Celidi bonamo.
I don't want to sound like a broken record Chile.
Eh, yano hakaraté, kubua se losese, we, eh, mona, monako ngai ele, and.
Eh, I had requested that this, this bill must be given to you at least a week or two weeks before.
Bili e, lele tshanezi, lefilue ona, beke, kosa di beke se bedi, bili rekopa.
So that you don't see it for the first time when we meet you and we expect you to make an input.
Hori, liskena ibona luan kha, khumpie no, ene, le tshanezi, kuta kadi titi, yokota di tshwelo, maba bili ona khumpie no, kap.
It's like writing an exam. You can't study today and you are expected to write an exam today.
Kusana le famotakwa la tla kuba, hawi tula kanyese, tla kuba khumpie no, kalatsasila tla kubone.
Haritshwani agir, there are those who are able to comprehend quickly.
Eh, haritshwani, khonale baba kwanau kutsara, kosa kutla waxanya, eh, bonolo.
But there are those who must prepare, take time, understand the content, so that when we invite you here for oral submissions, obadi le, you are able to speak to us about something that you have read.
Khonale baba tlokanakwa, ya hori, eh, ba buise, ba tloka, ye, ba bute, horba konuhu kisiis.
But this process does not end here today in Moses Scottani.
Yanu ke, eh, se hasifelifa no khumpie no Moses Scottani.
Eh, we were persuaded also over and above this public hearings, Mahosi.
Eh, ralusele tshokoza, eh, re hakulutse, horba bili di tetu ze.
We must also convene a session of this nature with the Houses of Traditional Authorities.
Retshanezi, renne lekopano, e tshanele, e, leba maklo asosisi.
Across all provinces.
Moni provinsi, eh.
And I think this is something we can do.
Kese losese kwanahala onkoka dira.
But because we are here today, let's proceed.
Khumpie no refano, aritshwani pe.
So two blocks away, Honorable Phillips, on, two blocks away.
Eh, di bloko se bedi kutla fa.
The classes, they are on top of each other there.
Ke di klasi, eh, ke mitlatacha.
Now, there's this friend of mine, every time when the bell rings, he's the first one to walk out of the class.
Eh, khonale tala yame, eh, hetzipi il, tzipi askolo il, inele yena wa nklaku twa motlasi.
And it is not any hard to anyway, he just stands there.
Eh, onasa itlakanelaku, pe onu, utwa fela e, pantlefal.
Now, the lower classes stand at seven and eight at the bottom, so nine and ten were on top.
Seven, eh, eh, eighty, kitakotlasi, rinala lebo, oboma tene kwa.
Now, I realize that every time the bell rings, this is the man who walks out, every time.
Kamulemo ha, oh, kena, oh, hetzipila, kena tshanpe.
Then I went to top, I went to the, to my class with a bucket full of water.
Ka yakotlasi niya, ka kichere, eh, bucket, eh, kletzimit.
Then when the bell rang.
Illetzipila.
I thought it's him who's going to appear there.
Ka zahori, kena taktakelampu.
Eh, skali, it was the principal.
Kanteki moho.
And I did the proper job on the principal.
Kadira senne ke i ma itumo ame, hu, 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 homohokuaspor.
So there was no discussion, no DC.
Eh, ine, ine, itutube itzore, kitlo nihamakasa di tlapel.
I was expelled on the spot.
Eh, ka, ka kalelekiwa, kona mutuzi.
I did not even know that the principal was wearing a new suit for example, I mean.
Ke nekisa itzuluri sutya principalai incha.
Now, I can't go home and tell the elders that, eh, I poured the principal with water.
Inkase haika volela batzadure, eh, ape, ketsasi principalaka bits.
So I'm sure you know Patima, right? You know Patima?
Patima la itimus.
Yeah, so I had to go and enroll there.
Ka tshane la urkilo ikwadisa ko Patim.
Eh, then the community of Mkuwase took a decision, Honorable Paulson, that, eh, all the learners from Lida are not wanted here.
Yanu ke, ba, ba, ba itutu baba zwankoli dakhaba baba te.
All of them.
Inele sichaba, sesterensete.
Yeah, SGB, everybody said, no, Lida, Channing, you are not wanted here.
Ale bate, le naba zwankoli, leita akoko Channing.
So I had to go and enroll in Patima.
Ka yako Patim.
Now, at that time, you needed a testimonial.
Kana koe, na obatluale, le kwalo labu pak, kosa busupi, ba hori. Kana koe unobatluale, lekualo labu pa, kosa busupi, bahore, so, so sibu ankeso de na.
Yeah, so why do you leave in the middle of the year to another school?
Lo hore, hore mu twela, o, o twela skolo saha, mo haraha wa ha, uywe ikwadisa ku skolo sese.
Now, my testimonial tells the story of eh, water arrangement.
Yanoke, lekualo lela la galabu supilela, libua ka khanya bagetia me.
But because my grandfather was a teacher, he wrote me a testimonial.
Yanoke, eh, kauri eh, eh, remholo ineli ena eh, eh, murutabad, kena kuadile lekualo lela busupi.
So, some of you here who want a testimonial, I can also write a testimonial.
Le na, falé ratá, kubonale kualo labu supi, kano kwalé.
On Tuesday, we were meeting the president of the republic in parliament, I want to give him testimony that we had met the people of Moses Scottan, and this is testimony.
Kala bo bedi, kiloko panale, relo ko panale eh, presidentewana.
I'll tell you more.
Ketswanizi kimolalele hori, kane tirko panile batwa Moses Scottan.
That story of JM Timi High School will continue in the later stage.
Kele eh, 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 karulo eh, latelanya, khanya JM Timi, itlatzuele la mo, na kune saphelisinti.
For now, welcome.
Eh, khayana, arubu enka hori kialamu he.
Okay, none of you is going to let bend yana he.
Yeah, eh, ah, leli sohre ya, lekopi ya, kala la, la nza manya na feela.
Eh, eh, kasto ana honali, ah, okana bangkuti bakai.
Kasto ana honali eh, puro eh, eh, mo di, eh, mo di diye zan, mo di diye zoo. Eh, rebua ka mukholo kwanu, kosa mo di diye zan. Eh, nekinakana kore tla rakifesa obua fa bili di diye zan, ah. Eh, nekiri keta, kera mukholo kwanenga. Ba makete bakai zumopeli ma, wa utu se poska toló. Arkeskaitolog.
Yeah, now, I want to take this opportunity and invite Honorable Gancho.
Karata kosea shunu eh, eh, ke na leze, mototlaki Gancho.
Honorable Gancho is going to tell us how we're going to work today.
Eh, mototlaki Gancho, otla rebolale la hori, di ruwala, ya rona itlo kotsuele la, jang kumpie.
Now, Honorable Phillips speaks English.
Mototlaki Felix eh, eh, Phillips, ubu asedi aklad.
Eh, but she's from the Northwest.
O zwa mo Northwest.
At least mupapa telling ma zo.
Mufevma zo. Anma tata kasi mulla ya.
Yes, that's right.
Skaitolog.
My problems are about to start and I'm going to interpret.
Honorable eh, Mkunu is from Kwazulu Natal. Mototlaki Mkunu, o zwa Kwazulu Natal. Honorable Mkunu Kwazulu.
Eh, she's a Zulu speaking person.
Eh, agizo hori arba pupura ya, skabaitolog, arba pupura wa taru.
And then Honorable Gancho is from the Eastern Cape.
Eh, Honorable eh, mototlaki Gancho, o zwa ku Eastern Cape.
Eh, she speaks Tosa.
Eh, ubu asedi Tosa.
We are ted. She's teddy. And then you have eh, Honorable Paulson is from, Honorable Paulson is from the Western Cape.
Eh, mototlaki Paulson eh, o zwa Western Cape.
Eh, agizo, ah, agizo hori, Honorable Paulson eh, ubu afrikazi, or Honorable Paulson uh, umukaini, ah, skabaitolog. But Honorable Paulson is from the Western Cape, baritukela. But eh, I, kenalumutale gelakafrikazi, shemai boonimati, skaitolog. And then, but he prefers to speak English. Eh, Honorable Paulson was a lecturer in UWC, UCT, CPUT.
Inele, motlakeli di ko CPUT.
Honorable Mkunu was a teacher.
Eh, mototlaki Mkunu ya na, ineli muktabana.
Shem, Honorable Paulson was working in a mine.
Eh, mototlaki Paulson inadira kudiman.
Eh, Honorable Phillips.
Oh, mototlaki Phillips.
Yeah, aye, ngash, ah, ah, she has not even started working.
Eh, hayle mototlaki Gancho ya na, severin kipiro hasis.
Now, I'm a child of a teacher, so at least, I'm somewhere there.
Nakewana muktabana, sorare, ki, ki, ki teng.
Ki teng evas, ki Moses hosi, ki mobu teachereng, ki mobu teachereng, a teacher, a god, teacher blood, royal blood. Yeah, Honorable Gancho.
Nga si chapesin? Kya kuleboha mudulas tulo?
Ma, nditatal tubana, ndibuli se, kweyoke, umtolaba?
Akisa chunenu, ki dumedise botle, baba linfa nu kumpie nu.
Ma, nka le, ndibuli se, kala amakosi.
Akisimut, tatahut dumedisa amakosi.
O chilo moschepe, si bangia ted, I am teddy.
Mudulas tulo, se zavule tuhori kia bua, janu kia bua.
Now, let me greet all of you.
Akili dumedise mbaha i chulote.
And the chiefs.
Di kosi.
Mine is just to explain the procedure that we're going to do now.
Same fe la, ki huu, 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 tchalo sa, zela ilun, huu, ritlo zama kaya ona kumpie nu.
We are going to request all those who wants to make eh, oral submissions.
Ito huu ku pa botle ba ilun, huu, batla kudi ra di chweyo, zawa na kamulomo.
To do that by show of hands.
Batla ba imise di, ala retla huu, hona kuba bona.
We will then identify ten people from this side.
Ritla, pa, baba li shu me, huu, zwa kwa li shakuri lele.
And also ten people from that side.
Ritla retsa hape, baba li shu me, huu, tla kamul shakuri lenu.
After that eh, those who are identified, they will have to come and occupy these middle seats.
Ba o baba setzin barhopilu, batla zanala ki huu, tla mo ma harin, batze di tulo ze ilun, huu, se zidi beglumu xarin.
When you approach the podium, you have to introduce yourself and the organization that you are representing.
Ah, u fitla Moses galemo, tla chwana la horu, iki tisi we, na, lina la kahu, kota o zwa walele mo katu ilun, huu, weyemete.
You indicate whether you support the bill or not.
O tla hisse, hor, ah, we amanu genmula, otsumo onu, kosa nyaa.
Each speaker will be given five minutes.
Si buise, wilesi, wesi tla nelwa, mituzwi, li mitlano.
We know that eh, maybe your inputs will be, will exceed the five minutes. We will request that you do so by eh, submitting a written submission.
Ka huu, we, tla hisse zahaku, di kafe ta, mituzwi, mitlano, ewine, inkajalo reka, ku pa hori, o zwa di kwalé mo fazi.
And also those who are scared to stand up and speak in front of, of the public, they can also do so by submitting a written submission.
Le ba o ba ilun, huu, he, bat sa ba huu bua, mo pilhava tu, ba ka kwa la mo fazi lebona.
We have our portfolio committee secretary, umis chilekama tu be, lakenu rise.
Re na le, mu, mu, kwalé di, wa komitia ona, me chilisi.
She has the forms, she will be able to assist you.
Onale di foro mo, zele huu, huu, tla tu sakatza, hona, huu, hona, huu, taza, ridmanele zoné.
We are looking forward to hearing your inputs and your engagements, please feel free, be comfortable, you can express yourself with your comfortable language.
Ritla rata tatahutwa ma ikutu alona, lehulolo se, re, libua ka putu loho, o kana di rsalile, lemele ilun, huu, ikutu lo, kile fa obua galone.
Thank you very much.
Lebri le, mina kani.
Shem, anyala, gel mupapa tele ma zo ho, skaitolog. Eh, anyala eh, eh, borre le, le ngutulemos eh, eh, akasa alamo. Eh, ramota ramuiza kumu rulen kwa, or ko, eh, manama kude eh, ko puke, le na mo fandi swiziola, ana sipi, 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 sipi. Wow, ita male fe.
Now, let's eh, thank you very much, Honorable Gancho.
Re kuleba kha, hume na kani, mototlaki Gancho.
Eh, I forgot to tell you that we also have eh, the Sun language interpreters.
Kelebele, kelebeze, kuli tis, huu, rinale, ba ilun, huu, ki bha ra nu, ba pu, ya ma zo ho.
Yeah, so all the languages are essentially covered here.
Di pu atzo atze, kama neti di putetwi, di teng.
Ne kili batla afrikazi, mukwak.
Ne kira tay bili ke, tilikabua pu eh, asburu.
Inkay toloka some self.
Inkay ra nula, na kabon na.
Yeah, eh, inkali, yer, inkali magata.
Inkali chusa.
Yeah, okay, let's start on the right, note hands.
Osimulaya, lokama tchakoni la ona, la moja, inte, inte, remisa ma zo ho rona.
So, as we note you, you come here, there's something you're going to be told there by staff, you say, you ma'am, you say, you say, you say, you say. I did not even count, okay, please come to, if I've noted, you come to the queue, this, this, this side. Okay, how many chairs do we have? We need two more, two more, eh, it's women's man.
Ararate bomme, era, eh, eh, eh.
Ke kodi ya bomme, ne ketirikaze ya bomme.
Ke koba bomme, baba be.
Bomme, baba bedi. Can I get two women?
Go in them.
Osantana liku.
Yeah. One more man. I get one more man, Honorable Paulson. I get one, I get one more man, Honorable Paulson, ubu la ma, skaitolog.
Akitologe yeu.
Hey, humnatu mo Northwest.
It's very nice in Northwest.
Bakai zu wa, bangkuti bakita manlebona, skabaitolog. Humnatu. Beke tanga meri go Limpo, Honorable Mutambi can speak all the languages there, Venda, eh, Tonga and all of them, lerona ba, ba huri raya.
Next week, we will win Limpo, eh, the chapperson, eh, Ms. Mutambi will be using the language of her choice that side.
Uwe in Kwazulu Natal, Honorable Mkunu was dealing with us kasi Zulu.
Lerona, anerile kua, basi unatala, memku nu naramelelezi, kasi Zulu.
Elargen, nagu Western Cape, bovi as Honorable Paulson, wakosamika karu.
Le ten ku Western Cape, ritlo huu, kwa kamototlaki Paulson.
And the Raya Eastern Cape, Honorable Gancho, han, han, kaya karu na kwa.
Lerona, harin tchabo Eastern Cape, mototlaki Gancho, le na wa huu, zena ze.
Anga hori, mwarba pupuri.
Lerona, hara limbo re, ma fela jalu.
How many do we need? One more, one more hand from the right side. Okay, there was that guy, yeah. Okay, I suspect all of you have heard how we do it. You introduce yourself, tell us your name, if there's an organization you are representing, and we go to issues. Let me set my timer quickly. It looks like, hey, there's a man called Eric Stock here. Where is he? Oh, there is that sort today. Do you mind that this dog? Yeah. That this dog was with us in Freiberg on Friday. He was with us in Lechtenberg yesterday. And today is here. Tells you how keen, how serious he takes this issue. He is very passionate about this kind of work. Now, on Friday, he spoke for fifty minutes. Yesterday, he spoke for thirty-eight minutes. And when he took the platform yesterday, I went out. And when I came back, I was told that he has confirmed that he's coming here. And I gave him a surety that it has ended. I mean, fifty plus thirty-eight is already eighty-eight. And I suspect even today, he's going to want to run another lecture here. Marfanda was some minute. Please proceed.
Afternoon. I'm councillor Jean Keizer. I represent some of the farmers and I'm a member of... I'm also a member of the Greater Asamal Fire Protection Association and a landowner in the Wilifansik area. We've, I've been twenty-two years on the farm, so been fighting quite a few fires already. We do support the bill, but with some changes and some more clarity on some of the issues. We are not implementing the current law, so... So how are we going to implement the new one? Sixty percent of felled fires. Do start on state ground. But why do they start on state ground? One service delivery issue is a big problem. Waste removal doesn't happen, there's no... There's no central places for waste disposal. Rural schools outside of municipality areas. Don't get refrigerations because they don't have a municipality account. So what happens is the community sets the stuff alight. Because it becomes a problem for them and a health issue as well. Second place, training. Training doesn't happen. About felled fires and their act. Remember, it's not just a training, it's an education and it's a life skill that we're going to teach people. That will save a life sometime or if... And even job creation can happen from there. Third thing, equipment. They don't have the right, sorry. They don't have the right equipment, PPE, lowers. To assist in felled fires. Fire stations are under-resourced. They don't have the right equipment. According to the Municipal Structures Act, number one hundred and seventeen of nineteen ninety-eight and Regulation Subsection Eight, One J Three reads the following. Specialized firefighting services such as mountain felled and chemical services. How many fire stations do comply with this? If I just take Rustenburg as example. We have two firefighters, two bakis. The Unimarc that's supposed to help with felled fires in the mountain areas are standing for years already. I'm not sure if the problem lies at the call center or some of the firefighters. And I'm not generalizing, please. When you phone in, they say it's not their responsibility to assist with felled fires. And then, there's no timeframe on the printed documents. Of when this bill closes and will be acknowledged. State-owned entities. Must also be part and comply with all regulations. If they don't comply, please issue fines for them as well. I totally agree with peace officers. Traditional leaders to help assist in enforcing the law. But who's going to train? And oversee their work. Is there going to be a door open for criminals? Or more corruption in certain municipalities? Fines and penalties, when last was that renewed? You do get your law-abiding citizens that do fire breaks every year. But then you also get the ones that don't. And this is private and state-owned. They would rather pay the fine because it's cheaper than doing the fire break work. Prevention is better than a state disaster or a province disaster. Private property owners, FPAs, are not legally covered when they're out. Fighting the fires where some people don't or can't go in. Can they please get more assistance on that as well? Why is there no further information on MOUs between provinces, neighboring countries? Why most working on fire go to other countries, but they can't get other countries to come and assist us? How many more lives do we need to lose in felled fires? Before the act gets taken seriously. I just want to take a, now I've probably passed my time, I just want to take a second or two. Want to thank all the people that lost their lives in felled fires this season. And the others that's also assisting us in this problem. And firefighters working. In very difficult and under-resourced. Fire stations. Thank you.
Councillor Keizer, you are a councillor in Rustenburg. You debate them and they give you time. So you know when we set time here. Next speaker.
Everyone. My name is Vivian Mjolli.
Nadi Vivian Mjolli.
A councillor from Rustenburg local municipality and being seconded at Bojanala Platinum District Municipality. I am standing here with a very serious concern. The invitation. The invitation, how it was being distributed. Remember, as councillors, we are representing our communities. That this bill is affecting them directly. So if the invitation is not being communicated with us... As you indicated, program director, when you said all the councillors must rise, you saw the poor attendance. That does not bring justice to this bill. So that is my concern. My colleague has already raised many issues regarding the bill. And indeed, we lose many lives, like the one in Derby. We have a farmer in Derby. Yes, thank you.
Gungumkosa. Gungumkos. Yeah, Ngashi is saying that. Oh, King Ngasha Ranger. We are going to fund it. She knows you. Proceed.
Let me greet everybody in the name of peace. My name is M. Iram Tualah. I am representing the Fire Protection Association of Rustenburg. I'm also responsible for the implementation of the Fire Brigade Services Act, Act ninety-nine of nineteen eighty-seven. I have realized that there is a gap between the National Felt and Forest Fire Act and the Fire Brigade Services Act, including the Disaster Management Act, Act eighty-seven of two thousand and two. That will be including the South African National Standard, one zero zero nine zero, Community Protection Against Fire. Although I will submit a comprehensive input in writing. But I also indicate that in the definitions of the amendment, I want us to insert the definition of peace officer, chief fire officer and fire prevention association. Chief fire officer.
Chief fire officer.
Fire prevention officer.
Fire prevention officer.
I also want the House to take note that there must be a distinction of role between the municipality and the fire protection association. This will assist the community because the community might fail to benefit due to unclear rules. Let me pause here and I will submit comprehensive inputs in writing.
Thank you, Chairperson. I would like to create the delegation and the public at large. I'm a committee member from the council of Bakatla. I'm a what councillor in Moritile municipality? My job is regarding the lands and environment affairs. The first and the second speakers, they spoke about time. According to the chairperson, his wish was that we were supposed to have received these documents two, I mean, a week or two before. I don't know whether my fellow attendants got, there is anyone who received these documents a week or two before, but when it comes to me, I receive it today. Be as it may, we support this bill because its intentions is to safeguard our community. There are four or five points. The first one. There is a good intention about this bill to handle the issues in our communities. Where I'm coming from, in Moritile, most of the land belongs to the tribal authorities. I think the chiefs must be engaged regarding this bill. Because fires affect the livelihood of the people, affect the livelihood of the fields and so forth. Secondly, implements. Any speaker who spoke about implements. I would like to make an example regarding Moritile. Moritile consists of various villages. I will give an example with Kosi Makapani. Sometimes you find that there are only two fire brigade trucks, two or three. The number of firefighters is low and when you look at the community, the community is a big number. Thirty-one, a genuine this year, as an example. Quarter past eleven during the night, Kosi Maubani, Makapani.
Maubani.
Maubani, phoned me. Telling me that the tribal offices are buried. I made a call at half past eleven. After two or three hours' time, the firefighters or fire services arrived. We need the responsive firefighting in Moritile. The other point is about law enforcement. There are people who are deliberately creating fires. And no repercussions for that. Anna, Chief Makapani, Chief Maubani, we don't know who must take steps against people who are creating fires deliberately. That's why I'm requesting that the department and the government must work hand in hand with us. There are other points, they are included in our written submission regarding the villages falling under our chiefs in Moritile. We will submit that. I thank you. I greet you all. I greet you all?
Eh, du medisa, i ketediri, pe, le, aru, na, yako, parliamente?
Eh, the, I, I, I would like to greet the Parliament delegation?
Du medisa, ba, tu, va, vote, ba, ba, ki, mfa?
Members of the public who are here?
Eh, na, ki, na, Daniel Shomwani, from Kolitlavile?
Daniel Shomwani, from Kolitlavile?
Anda, ma, di, we, municipality?
Anda, ma, di, being municipality?
Ke, le, eh, what committee, ko, wat eleven?
What committee member at, eh, wat eleven?
Yeah, eh, rana, le, problem, eh, ya, di firefighters?
We got a problem regarding firefighters?
Eh, Kolitlavile, ona, le, fire station?
In Kolitlavile, we do have a fire station?
Senorensa, lesa, ai, wapat?
It was built?
Eh, leka, cheko, maybe, se, ai, we, ten years back?
Ten years back?
But leka, cheko, a, se, bereki?
Even up to this far, it, it doesn't operate?
Eh, ora, rego, ma, di, we, rana, le, fire station, eh, ko, bread?
We do, eh, as ma, di, we use breads, fire station?
And then breads is too far, hoya, kobo, jeriko?
Eh, breads is too far?
Madinyani, lehonyani?
Jeriko, lehonyani, madinyani?
Eh, ona, le, me, logo, ba, tobako, ba, nosoko, la, kare?
If, if they are?
Eh, di, pano, horo, le, ba, tobaka, swas, san, san, le, remez, ma, di, we?
The people can die, because we are still waiting for ma, di, being?
So, nane, to, kopa, ore, bili, eh, he, lori, eh, ra, pasi, sa?
If we, if we pass this bill?
Retlen, retlo, odita, pe, le, hori, eh, we've got enough resources, ya, ore?
Retle, retlo, le, kola, for, ar, na, di, di, resources, di, le, kani?
Nane, tu, ona, di firefighters, se, te, lori, eh, ditla, samaha, na, le, me, lo, he?
And to check us to whether indeed we do have firefighters who can stand for these fires?
Especially, ya, mosai, te, ya, ma, di, we?
Mosho in ma, di, we?
Kar, na, le, eh, di, wati, eh, forty-one?
We have got, eh, forty-one wards?
With only one, eh, fire station?
With serviced by one fire station?
Yeah, but, eh, na, ki, wanai, lo, hori, eh, lo, na, ki, te, le, di, pe, le, elika, ta, na, kova, na, hori, station, esen, esan, le, Klavile, sa, bereka, and then?
My proposal is that you delegation, if you can come there and see to it that, that station, eh, in Le Klavile is functioning?
Because, eh, rana, le, hori, ba, tobashwa, le, kamo, dinku, san, san, le, remez, eh, eh, fire station, ya, bread, eh?
Eh, people die in their houses when we are still waiting for breads, eh, fire, eh, station, to service us?
Ya, ne, kupa, parliamente, eh, letlen, letlo, wanai, hori, rana, le, problem, eh, isiriasi?
Uh, request that parliament should come to us and see, eh, eh, our problems we are encountering there, people are dying.
But I support the bill, lori, epasi, we, and then, eh, lo, na, letlen, letro, ira, odita?
I support the bill, and I invite you to come and do the audit and check our offices?
Yeah, thanks.
Kala, bo?
Fran? Eh, ki, di, se, chaba, se, so, de, se, lin, te, gamo?
To our community, thank, good morning?
Hmm, isi, I'm very honored, and privileged, uh, hornama, today?
Ki, mo, tuto, tata, hona, temfanu, kumpiano?
Ibele, ke, lebo, ke, lebo, hale, si, buise, si, boli, si, mo, pe, le, haka, mo?
And to thank the, the, the previous speaker who spoke before me?
Kahore, le, so, kahore, o, tla, ala, ma, di, Berlin, la, ke, tla, le, ke, le, ku, ma, di, we?
Yes, he is from Ma Di Ben, as well as I am from Ma Di Ben?
Ki, ama, mo, pe, la, la, so, ele, hori, ki, what committee, under what, eh, thirty-four?
I am from the what committee thirty-four?
Kamu, hona, hona, ku, ma, di, we?
Right, in Ma Di Ben?
Eh, my section is very rural?
Le, filo, le, ke, tu, angoku, lo, ne, ki, me, si, mahai?
Le, le, hori, is a communal land?
Ele, hori, ki, le, le, filo, la, la, ma, ma, le, filo, le, taka, ne, swing, la, Kosi?
Eh, rin, le, eh, silo, se, le, hori, si?
Libito?
Eh, libito, la, ma, ki, Afistos Mu Alusi, wa, what committee from, kamu, Ma Di Ben?
Afistos?
Wa, what thirty-four?
Afistos?
Mu Alusi?
Mu Alusi, from what twenty-four?
Yes, eh, rana, lebo, tata, kahore, ro, na, reta, le, kama, hara, communal land, ele, hori, is very rural?
We do have a challenge, as we are from the communal, communal land, which is very rural?
Nenka, kopa, bo, te, di, pe, le, bu, ba, parliamente?
I will request that the leadership of parliament?
He, lo, hori, ba, kona, huira, hori, di, maspala, di, kona, kuna, mutirisu?
If they can help, that the municipalities have to help or assist?
Be, kia, rta, ma, ona, ma, ri, ne, le, mo, lo, mo, nsi, mo, na, yar, la, ku, ma, di, nyani?
Last week, we experienced lots of fires in the area of Madinyani?
Mo, le, mhorri, ise, he, ke, le, what committee, ki, phone, ne, la, maspala?
As the what committee while phoning the municipality?
They didn't respond?
Abatsi, buka, kotelele?
Mo, le, mhorri, community, ile, ya, zamai, ile, koba, ta, u, di, ma, mo, lo?
Where the community had to go to try to fight the fire?
Mo, le, mhorri, omu, ma, community, wile, anna, le, di, kovalo?
Where the one member of the community sustained some injuries?
Ri, ri, porti, le, kovalo, eko, maspala?
We have reported that injuries to the municipality?
Even the municipal manager, hand responder, as a what committee?
Mo, holi, the manager, wa, ku, maspala, eh, hati, buka, ja, kalu, ku, la, committee?
Ya, non, ki, kopa, hori, molau, ki, molau, le, horu, o, 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 bu, kwa?
I'm requesting that, as this bill is very important?
Kahore, di, maspala, za, ro, na, di, ar, fe, la?
Because our municipalities are failing us?
Are, ne, le, training, ya, ba, tu, ba, ni, kama, hara, community?
Let the community be trained?
Lo, na, le, le, ba, parliamente?
You, as the parliamentary delegation?
Train, ambat, ba, le, hori, he, ona, le, di, kote, te, di, agenki?
Train the people, so that when they are, eh, eh, agent, eh, injuries?
Record, ho, ba, consult, ta, ba, tu, si?
So that we can consult them?
Because, maspala, ona, ba, tu, ma, di, ma, function?
The municipalities is not helping us at any way?
Ya, kia, kopa, mo, and then, eh, molau, kopa, si, sa, o, bu, kwa?
I am asking that, and I do agree with this?
We, fela, le, le, ba, parliamente?
As the parliamentarian?
Especially, Ma Di Ben?
More especially, Ma Di Ben?
Only, le, administration, from, he, fti, le, ne, le, under administration?
It was under the administration?
Is non-functional?
In the previous years, even now, is non-functional?
Ke, kopa, hori?
I'm requesting that?
Mapilo, abatu, abu, kwa, le, ba, parliamente?
The people's of, the, the people's lives is very crucial?
Lo, na, ene, hori, training, evite, kala, bo?
Please try to push for the training, thank you very much?
Eh, kadi, du medisa, o, fela?
Greetings to everyone who is here today?
Get, ona, kaa, parliamente?
Let me start with the parliament?
Ke, ra, wushi?
Greetings?
Ki, du medisa, le, Kosi?
Let me greet, eh, also, our chiefs?
And, eh, ki, we, happy, ki, ku, pe, le, twa, le, lo, for, ma, councillor, a, wa, kaka?
And apologize on behalf of my councillor?
En, za, ba, twa, rana, le, eh, di, tero, za, mona, thwes, te, za, conference?
Who are committed with some negotiations of the conference?
Ki, na, hana, hori, maybe, most of the councillors, so, ro, ba, san, na, kaje, nu, ki, ona, le, ba, kala, le, ba, le, mo, lo, na?
Ke, za, kore, kis, kil, ona, le, ba, kala, le, li, di, le, mkorri, bunsi, joma, councillor, aska, na, di, mpi, you?
Eh, oh, wa, mo, ki, Donald, temu, lokom, me?
Ki, Don, I'm Donald, mo, lokom, me?
From what nine?
From what nine?
Kolitlavile, under, ma, di, we, municipality, local?
In Le Klavile, under, eh, Ma Di Ben municipality?
Eh, parliamente, rana, le, challenge, ya, ya, environment, mo, mo, country, ni, aru?
Eh, parliament, we do have the challenge of the environment in our country?
If, a, raka, di, la, le, di, issues, eh, o, twa, na, le, di, motorist?
If we can deal with the issues of the motorist?
Cause most of the time, eh, o, tla, kira, o, o, traveler from one place to another?
Ho, le, han, si, we, tla, o, twa, ku, le, filo, le, le, wai?
O, kara, ilo, re, se, kwa, se, aja?
Then you find that the forest is burning?
Ero, i, puti, sa, re, se, kwa, se, o, se, chava, ya, o, kwa, za, ona, meati?
Then you ask yourself, eh, how did it burn, because there is no water?
I experienced something, ki, tama, le, maluma, kaka?
I have experienced something while I was traveling with my uncle?
I fit out, u, ba, ala, tla, eh, coke, wa, cigarette, mo?
After smoking, he threw the cigarette coke through the window?
I think, ilo, na, ki, problem, eh, ra, more, eh, we, rin, le, problem, eh, ya, environment, or, eh, if you mo?
I'm thinking that also contributes to the challenge of these failed fires that we are experiencing at the moment?
And the other issue, eh, ma, be, ah, hori, re, rin, le, wa, tata, wo, yalo?
The other issue is?
Ki, ba, tu, di hunters?
Is the hunters?
And then, eh, re, ro, twa, saha, parliament, de, hori?
We are encouraging parliament that?
Is a, fela, yalo, eh, this amendment?
This amendment mustn't just end as it is?
Ba, we, le, ku, parliamente, ba, ne, mo, fazi?
They have to, eh, go back to parliament and sit and discuss?
And then, ba, re, tla, le, di, karabo, se, di, male, eh?
So that we can receive some feedback, which is positive?
And we only pleased you guys, hori, le, sa, e, le, fe, za, di, program, ezale, na?
We are urging you, so that when you finish your programs?
E, ve, le, 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 wa?
Then you forget all about us?
Cause, re, re, kopa, ne, wa, tata, wo, si, la, si, too, much?
Because we have serious issues or challenges?
Ba, tu, wa, lisa, me, mer, eh, go?
People are losing their jobs?
Di, pa, lo, hola, di, afia?
We are losing the livestock?
And, in, na, wa, tata, mo, ri?
It becomes a serious problem to us?
And then, eh, kara, kata, o, encourage, aha, pe, lo, hori? Eh, this program, eh, za, ma, le, mo, di, kolo, re, ro, te, ba, na, ba, ri, na, kaa, kamo, lo?
I will encourage that this program must even reach our schools, so that we can teach our learners?
And then, eh, rana, re, te, ngasi, di, what committees, re, kaa, kona, li, tu, sa, re, kona, o, o, ba, kala, le, na?
As the what committees, we would like to assist, so that we can work together?
Ona, le, wanai, ba, hola? Ban, nenzwa, is, hori, mo, lo, o, au, au, bu, kwa, montany, almo, u, fi, san, kha?
So that they have to know that the fire can, eh, eh, it can, the, come again, sir?
Ho, re, mo, lo, au, 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 awa, si, ama, mo, 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 u, fi, sa, kha?
So that the fires in the fields is not so, is not okay?
So, re, re, ra, amu, he, la, mo, molau, a, man, mente?
We do submit, we do support this bill?
Re, kopa, re, veri, ki, sa, ne?
We, we request that we have to work together?
Or, re, kono, fe, ya, ba, na, ba, tata, bu, twa, rana, le, bu, na, kala, bo?
So that we can win this challenge that we facing, thank you very much?
Thank you very much, eh, tate, mo, lokom, me?
Ke, le, ba, kama, lokom, me?
As you were speaking, eh, honorable Kanjo was looking at you properly, to la, pe, le, me?
You can continue with it?
Dumela, kira, tato, du medisa, honorable chairman?
Greetings to the honorable chairman?
Honorable members?
Honorable members?
And, le, ba, kha, itu, ka, fela?
And our, eh, oh, eh, honorable communities?
Na, kadi, bito, ki, Sarakobedi?
I am Sarakobedi?
Ki, tla, koo, Pochestrom?
From Pochestrom?
Iga, re, extension eleven?
Iga, re, extension eleven?
Kimutu, timo, Northwest Umbrella Fire Protection Association?
I am the student in Northwest Umbrella Fire Protection?
Efandi, wanke, FP, and MCita?
Subsidize by FP, N, N, Cita?
Ha, ki, bereki?
I am unemployed?
Ibele, ki, rutiwa, kutu, sa, se, cha?
I am trained to help or assist the community?
Mo, malobe, in, keta, ho, tima, mo, lo, ko, Pochestrom? No, water affairs?
Last week, we assisted in, in, extinguishing the fire in Ma Di Ben?
Ba, tu, ba, water affairs, eh, le, ba, Transnet, ba, na, ba, si, yo, utu, sa, utima, mo, li?
The people from Transnet and Water Affairs were not present to assist us with this fire extinguishment?
And, mo, lo, onu, utu, utu, letu, ko, game reserve?
This fire have already went through to the game reserve?
Most, eh, refer, ite, te, un, utima, mo, lo? Ba, ba, tu, ba, government, eh, be, le, ba, tla, ba, fa, ba, tu, ba, bona, di, ju, ona, abare, fa, nix?
After extinguishing this fire, the government, the people from the government came and give some, the people food? But us, we didn't receive even a thing?
And, rana, le, no, kadi, se, poro, mo, no, ken, di, mos, poro, un, un, kus, na, hmm, di fire breaks?
There was a rail trail as well as the river, so there was no fire breaks?
Na, tampa, ri, di, re, di, fire breaksi, ri, di, me, mo, lo, for, re, kona, ro, si, re, le, za, fori, university, is, a, cha, le, man, kua, ba, ituti?
We had to make this fire, eh, fire breaks to prevent the fire from going, reaching the, the students as well as the, eh, residence area?
Nane, ki, kopa, hori, mo, molau, wa, nu, ya, na, o, tui, le?
I am requesting that in this bill?
O, kate, le, ba, tu, ba, Transnet, eh, le, ba, Escomo, water affairs, eh, li, Sandral, for, ba, iti, re, le, di, fire breaks, ita, bu?
They have to emphasize that the people from Transnet, Escom, and Sandral, they have to do their own fire breaks?
Kahore, ne, mo, lo, o, sta, ta, ten, ko, ko, ten, ko, ko, di, ko, bu, Sandral, eh, le, bu, water affairsi?
Because the fires always starts there, at the, those areas mentioned?
Kahore, na, ba, iti, le, ti, di, fire breaks, ha, mo, lo, o, to, la, ngas, o, kona, ro, she, sa, man, kuka, na, ma, ru?
Because if they have fire breaks, the fire won't reach the houses or the livestock?
Kahore, ne, mo, malobe, in, kona, le, in, ta, to, mo, ona, tima, mo, lo, kaa, kwa, go, water affairsi, kaa, kwa, wile, a, cha, na, kua, a, tima, mo, lo?
Last week, there was a man who got injured while he was still, eh, inst, inst, putting off the fire in that area?
Ki, na, hana, ne, fora, kabe, ille, na, ki, tima, mo, lo, ya, le, ki, vi, ke, cha, un, kuro, di, ra, kala, ngafemi, la, kua, hi?
If it should have been me, what was supposed, or what was going to happen with my family?
Kahore, ne, arena, di medical aid, di, kana, di policy, fori, ba, kona, kumpo, lo?
As we don't have a medical aid as well as the funeral policies for, for, for the, for the funerals arrangement?
Kala, bo?
Thank you very much?
Eh, dumela?
Greetings?
Kali, vito, ki, te, bo, from Pochestrom, extension eleven? Eh, ki, student, timo?
Te, bo, from Pochestrom, I am the student from?
Eh, mo, Northwest Umbrella?
Northwest Umbrella?
Fire?
Fire?
Protection and Association?
Protection Association?
Eh, ba, tata, eh, efandi, wanke, FP?
Funded by FP, N?
MCita?
MCita?
Eh, o, molau, o, mon, cha, o, ke, na, ona? I hope, o, tsa, ma, ro, uru, tu, si?
In this new bill, I hope that will, it will assist us?
Or, e, ba, governmente, ba, pa, tala, le, di, membership fees, abone?
So that the government should pay their, their membership fees?
Obanere, a, so, kola, re, fu, ma, ni, school, lo, kota, u?
Because we are struggling, we have managed to get the, the, the school in Ta U?
Regalo, ro, tsa, ba, tu, ba, bang, kwa, ba, tse, be, kamo, lo, ba, kona, utu, sa?
So that we can train other people about the fire to assist us? Lack of funds is the challenge. We were given the school by Chief Mutibi. What are we, we are requesting from the side of the government is just assistance. Just like the previous speaker have already said. We do assist in the fires, but we are not getting, or we are not being appreciated or given something. So now we can't just risk about our lives. Because we risk for nothing. We are the students, but we end up working as the firefighters whilst there are people who are paid to do this job. When we passing this bill, we are requesting that please help us or work with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Valuable input indeed. Uh, I, I, it's my job to always give you good news, you know. Alidumelison. Okay. The winner of Comrades Marathon is from the Northwest. His name, uh, he's from Mafikeng, his name is Timur Renadija. The person who took the second place in the Comrades Marathon is from the Northwest, is from Rusting. His name is Edward Muti, Muti. Yeah, no, anything, again, my name is Muti Mutis, so anything that is Muti Mutian, so. You remember, Mos. And the last speaker here spoke about Chief Muti. Yeah, anything that is. It's in the blood, it's in the blood. You'll see, some, some of the people that I'm going to know there, you'll see surely somebody is from Mutis, let's go, the left. I see the old man has already noted himself. He realizes that I speak a lot, so he says, ah, he'll find me in the front. Okay, uh, say, I see your hand. More hands. Didig, you have heard some of the issues that are being raised, that they are raised to us, but they are actually speaking to you. Ntadé, I see your hand.
Women, I won't be disa, I won't be disappointed from our women.
No, I know for a fact they won't disappoint me.
They won't.
Who does not want to face this? I mean, look at this. Look at this, who does not want to face this? Okay, let's note more hands. Okay, even if it's this side, let's go. I saw, I saw the hand, the, the blue. Yes, you. He knows he's the last to speak, so I don't know. How many more do we need? Well, fine, okay. Okay, you are going to be the first, Ntadé. Uh, you're going to be the last, you know. So stop wasting your time. Uh, Stoki, don't raise your hand, you're going to be the last to speak. Uh, we are going to give you three hours. As usual. Okay, no, no, the last people to speak will be the chiefs, but Stoki is going to give us a lecture as usual. Ntadé, we now deal. I would like to create a delegation in front of us. Our chiefs. And all, uh, the people who attended the gathering. My name is. KP Mutusi. From Moses Scottani. Uh, I'm representing the farmers. From the onset. My question, sometimes I ask myself a question because I, I've been told that this, this law was enacted during nineteen ninety-eight. Because since nineteen ninety-eight, this law did not, uh, didn't function. How is the new one going to function? We, the rural people, we, we, we assume that government doesn't care about us. But there are reasons, which points to that. Look, if something comes from parliament and is intended to us, it takes long to reach us. At the last minutes, then we are requested to, to give our comments, suggestions. That means we are not considered as the first people to, to can be approached when it comes to the enactment of, of the law. Look, because we are, we are laypeople when it comes to, uh, uh, law. We need the assistance of those who have, uh, who knows better about, uh, the law. To read and explain to us such that they can give us, uh, advice and such that we can give proper and informed, uh, suggestions regarding the bill. We are, so we don't see justice regarding this, uh, 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 regarding these issues. I was just a joke of a chaplain. Because when we were elected, uh, we were told that this committee is going to do, to do one, two, three issues. We are going to give them necessary tools or implements which will assist you with. All these years, we have never received any training of some sort. About the issues which they've mentioned about, they've mentioned about us. Make us, uh, to fight with. This, fine. The government is the instigator because government is not taking us serious. We were just a committee of signing reports because at the end of the year, we'd given reports to sign, nothing else. We were promised implements. Those implements never reached us. Hundred and nine villages in, uh, under Moses Scottani. Uh, get us machines which will assist in creating fire belts. Such that yearly, we must get, uh, fire belts. That also did not, uh, materialize. One fire station for hundred and nine villages. The question is, will it, uh, manage? Uh, initially, or usually, we used to have trucks which were meant for fighting fires, but now they are no more. They are, they are not functioning. That's why I'm saying the government is not taking us serious. This issue of, uh, fire, it's, it has lots of segments from government. When you go, when you approach the Department of Agriculture, they send you to the Environmental Affairs Department. The, uh, Environmental Department will send you to the Disaster Management. Then it's, it seems the government is confusing us intentionally, they want us to give up on this. Uh, in Hapiri, that's where I'm coming from. When, oh, our livestock were burnt. And then the Agriculture Department, uh, came to us with a vet. The, uh, the, the vet instructed them that they must kill certain livestock. And they were given prescription which we were to use to buy some medication in order to heal the other livestock. Somebody asked, asked that question, when are we going to be assisted? I've got a suggestion that, uh, we must have a budget. Which will attend to the issues of when property is lost or somebody died, those people must be compensated. Second suggestion, train the youth, uh, to fight the fires. Let us not have one fire station, let us have some satellites, uh, fire stations closer to the people. Let us have awareness campaigns in our villages, look, today, few people are coming here because they are not aware. There are people who are, uh, starting fires and we are requesting that government must make sure that each and everyone of this country is informed about, uh, the fire issues. Uh, I won't say everything today, as the sonas say, thank you. So you know the people who are, who are starting fires? Yeah, we know them. I greet you all, ladies and gentlemen from parliament. And our chiefs. Frida Sekano, it's my name. I'm the secretary of the community.
National Field and Forest Fire Amendment Bill.
Because this is an amendment bill, it means that government realized that there are some issues which are left behind, which were not included in the bill. This invitation was not proper. It was said that farmers, their, uh, uh, farmers are invited. Uh, that means if you are not a farmer, you are unable to attend.
Two weeks before.
As we have, uh, after, as the chaplain said, we were supposed to have received this, uh, two weeks before.
So that we can read and understand, so that when we stand here.
So that we can read and understand, so that when we stand here.
We must be in the position to know what is it that we are talking about. I'm waiting for the tribal authority of Madau and the community at large. We are farming with cattle, it's a communal one. We do have livestock camps. We, people are employed to take care of livestock. When there, when there, there is fire at the livestock camps. We, the residents, we were unable to go to the field to assist in extinguishing the fire. As Madau residents, we don't know anything about extinguishing the fire. I experienced an incident where a fell, was burnt and it ended up engulfing a certain homestead as well. What my experience is that if there is fire in our area, a chief or co-si will use a loudspeaker in calling all the residents to come and assist in the extinguishing of the fire and the whole members of the community will, will rush to, to the scene. In the olden days, we used to use millimile bags or old blankets. We would wet them and then extinguish fire with them. But today, we do have bags, we do have old blankets, but there is no water. Then house was engulfed to the ground because we didn't know where to get water. We, the rural people, we are requesting that our communities should be trained under the leadership of our chief and ship such that when there is fire. Now, the training must be done under our chiefs. Such that our communities should be trained as to how to fight the blaze. If the blaze is coming from one side, what is it that you are expected to do? Yeah, the training will be beneficial to the community, to people like myself who are having camps for their livestock. We would impart that knowledge to the people who are taking care of our livestock as well. I heard one of the speakers say that at some stage, he was called by a chief informing him.
Informing him that the traditional office is bailing.
Yeah, in our tribal offices, we don't have fire extinguishers. It is not. The other issue is the fire caused by electricity. We don't have any knowledge as to how to extinguish such fires. I'm talking on behalf of our tribal authority because we don't have such equipments in our offices.
Supply us with fire extinguisher, try to teach us how to fight fire. Supply us with everything.
Tender is a problem because each and everything which is done nowadays, the name tender is attached to that. That it is not assisting us. Give us training, give us equipments. I thank you.
Greetings to everyone who's here today. Honorable members from our lovely government. I'm Mister. I would just love to suggest. There's people who have already spoken, have already said a lot. We are from Pampirstadt and. We are from Hapiri, Motlasramas Palawa. Moses Scottani's municipality. My concern, as the previous speaker have already said, we have hundred and nine villages. But there is not even a single fire station in this hundred and nine villages. Our children are even afraid of these fires, fire trucks because they see it for the first time, they don't know them. I am humbly requesting because the fire is very challenging and it's very destroying. If the government would bring the fire station closer to us as we are staying from the rural areas. We will be very grateful with this bill should, so that it can look at this issue of the fire stations. What is disturbing again is that when we have injuries from the fire, you have to be attended by the nurses. Unfortunately, our clinic operates only from Monday to Friday. Should you be banned during the weekend, that means you will get the assistance during, on Monday? We are requesting that when the government is implementing this bill, they should take note of the issues that we have already raised. Thank you very much. The secretary there. Just address the verse, not, not the others. Greetings to the honorable members of the parliament as well as the parliamentary officials. And to greet also our chiefs as well as the community which is here today. I am Kiana O Morena. I'm a landowner in Madibeng local municipality. The member of the Greater Madibeng Fire Association. I am here on my personal capacity to come here or to learn some other things about the fires. What I would like to hear from the parliamentary delegation is that what are they doing as a government to see to it that people have the knowledge of this bill that we are discussing today? In twenty twenty, when I arrived in the farm in Madibeng. I didn't have the equipments to clean the farm. The grass was very high. We end up taking some water to demarcate the area that we, that needed to be cleaned. Then we burned that fire. In the short period, then the other, the neighboring farmer approached us. To come and make sure that how did the fire started and is not going to the other areas or the other farmers. That is why he gave us the invitation to register ourselves under the organization that have been mentioned. Ignorance is not an excuse. We didn't know anything about fires until we found ourselves in that situation where we had to clean up and start, make the fire on the day. I would like to support the suggestions which have been, have already been made, that there have to be a training for the communities. The training should not only be, be taken by the farmers or the government institutions as the fire affects all of us. I just want to suggest with this little pink paper that I'm having of the bill. We were not afforded enough time to go through this bill, but I would love to to code from that item nine.
More item nine point seven. Search, arrest and seize relevant evidentiary material in the enforcement of the act.
That clause explains that. Explains that the government have to.
Nine point seven?
Oh, the nine point seven. Yoné italosayana? The bill grants peace officers, okay. Eh, mula otomo onu oné ya eh, batlangke diwaka hisolebe tappilbasitso di tata, za opu pusa ho twarela, le ho tsabu pakibomolobu, joba maliva moho, dira katsé mula o.
Item nine point seven eh, reki bala, ke beki, ke buaki, buisa nine point twelve?
This clause, when I am reading it with clause nine point nine point twelve.
Ke bona okare honali disjuncture between the two clauses?
Ke bo, I noticed that there is, eh, there is disjuncture, disjuncture between these two clauses.
Ka hunne, clause nine point seven eh, inea, the peace officers, li di traditional leaders who dira, sese twarela te, koli, konete fata hore eh, mula o, o zenati riso fela, nine point twelve Fiona, ebona ehri, kahon nessasaro horifera abili eh, go the House of National, oh, sorry, go the National House of Traditional and Quaysan Leaders.
This clause nine point seven is saying eh, eh, clause nine point twelve is saying quite the opposite of the nine point seven.
Ki ala bo.
Thank you very much. Greetings to everyone.
Ki du medise hoyaka ma imalona?
Greeting you all, portfolio observed.
Na ke twa ko, what for, ko karonya moriteli?
From what for, from the area of Moriteli?
Ki representaa ba le roletemo?
Representing the farmers and agriculture?
Kalina kele Jacob Monyeki.
I'm Jacob Molyte.
Monyeki, M O N Y E K I.
Mo, mo?
Monyeki.
Muleki?
Monyeki.
Monyeki.
Thank you mama. Right eh, ke tothmaka, we amohela this amendment bill.
I will start by supporting this amendment bill.
Eh, imba inali disadvantages.
But it do, it has some disadvantages.
Harana di zela.
We don't have roads.
Harana mezi.
We don't have water.
Harana bachal trainers.
We don't have the people who can, the trainers?
Right, iloritetza, di timamulo, kadi tla di twa di timamulo, doza mayakai.
These fire, fire trucks, when they come, where, which route they are going to use as we don't have roads?
Boza kaimizi.
Where are they going to get water?
Mokinan, kesakala sa eight kilometers.
Where I am residing is about eight kilometers.
Koba kakaramizi godi.
Where they could get some water?
Ena tela ebasa mangayon.
That road that they supposed to use?
Kimisi ma.
It got lots of potholes.
But it's national road.
But it's a national road.
Sese we habi.
The other thing?
Harana di kampa.
Di kampa is? Eh, we don't have camps.
Ke lefene fela la wuleha, haro konokontrola le roo.
It's just an open space, so we can't control our livestock.
Leha rekarva troy di fire belts.
Even though they can make fire burns.
Hagi boni kaberek.
They won't assist at all.
So, parlamenté itilemo ato.
Parliament is here to, 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 to the people.
Ka ere rona, repuso.
As it says, it is the government.
So, haroza blame, rare blamea parlamenté, re parlamenté sa.
We won't blame the government as we are the government ourselves.
Retlo blamea basama isi, barona.
We are going to blame our leaders.
Enebe, ebera pimpa.
And eh.
Eh, ro pimpa di councilara ko parlamenté.
We are going to tell about these councillors in the parliament.
Ka re, tsa tsa ma eh, ka di step.
As it have to follow certain steps.
Re la koma councilare, re nyaka di tire.
We are telling our, eh, our councillors that we need the services.
Di tere la hadinite.
We don't have services at all.
Ebera bajamba rowa pimpa ko parlamenté.
Then we will jump them and go snitch them there, the parliament.
Lebe la mula wa eh, si mo kasho busana.
We check, we will look at the law of, of the gov, the, the part which is governing.
Hale nyaka di tirelo, hahobe le muro.
If you're looking for the services, let we, let be the fire.
Bar no smoke, no service delivered.
No smoke, no service delivered?
Ki ala bo.
Thank you very much. Eh, kari medisa chepessen?
I greet you chepessen.
Oh, hi, you chepessen, lemki me dekwi. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Eh, my name ki Niniba Matala from World Forty Six.
Niniba Matala from World Six.
Eh, go Moriteli Municipality.
Eh, Anda Moriteli Municipality.
Eh, taki batwe, ekibatwe he indicator, kona yanuki hore, I do agree with this bill.
Ke ema no ke eh, mula otomo o, bili eh.
Because kinaha la hore, that's an improvement, improvement of the previous one.
Ke eh, keza, keza horse, ki tavulolo kotsa, ki tokafazo, ya mula o amalo.
We'll start to see the difference.
Retla konakobona ma umo, mora kafu.
Okay. Eh, the point, eh, I'm, I'm glad because most of the speakers, sate ba, ba, barima kilaganto, eni kibakaku ibu.
Eh, bu, most of the speakers have alluded to the points which I was intending to raise.
It looks like, una in the rural areas, we are forgotten nation.
Na relevei, ture, na batwame tse mahai.
How would that the department eh, hore, why are we not getting attention like other provinces? Bato bole no hore, the province that tona lewa kauten, ke bona ba, ba se, ba, ba greyang, di budget se koluku fika.
Okay.
Di rola ba di rural areas.
When you ask the departments, why are we not taken into consideration like other provinces? We would be told that eh, provinces like Houting are the ones who are raking the whole budget.
And then to, eh, province essentially northwest, kiona ele highly rural, and eh, inali more farms than muaute.
A, a province like northwest is a rural area, it has got more farms than Houting.
Koru why budgeti ilinyan?
Why is their budget so minute?
And then comes to the very same point, eh, lo horoko panakayo nakajeko ya ho, ya, ya, ya di firefighters.
The issue firefighters.
No honali two ladies eh, eh, gentlemen and a lady ona alimo, ba bua hore, ba kodiko lo, they volunteered for a bastardish towards the state. And they are not considered.
There was a young lady and a young man who told this gathering that they are at eh, training institutions and eh, but they are not being considered.
Na kinahanoro from now on, because now they were trying to improve the service as the government. Kinahanoro li shebe, leba na ba ilo horuba passise di metric, kona yamno, reba traine, most ona di department etse tona li.
My suggestion is that we do have eh, eh, youth who have passed metric, we should train them eh, to do such jobs.
To minimize unemployment.
Le hori, referi se eh, se kloko sabotlokati.
Also, haridi include ya kodiko lo, the very similar way, the way me, hard department of health ana eh, introduce occupational health and safety money company, let's have this education on the lower level.
Let's take this.
O sa ya skolo will be able to know how like damages ulatela mula you'll be causing.
Let's take this to the school, just as the department has done with health and safety and also to train or to educate even the granites and the opas to know that if you start fire eh, it's not a good thing.
If we know or hamulonuli de uma telamezi or uma telamu, honali melo eh, lo hori got different, how about ho ro, usavidi se mezi or usavidi se.
Initially, we used to use eh, water or sand, but there are fires which you can't use those.
We need that training, we need that education.
Eh, retloka chupelo, retloka hukati siwa.
Thank you.
Ki ala bo.
Dumelang?
I greet you.
Kera ta hu kokobeletza mahosi?
I would like to eh, to acknowledge our chiefs and everybody who's here.
Hona tenhaluna fana horu bonza hore, litsaya mulo sidiyas.
Eh, to be present here today, it shows that you take this issue of fires very serious.
Obu amfana ke kamohelo, Masilo?
Kamohelo Masilo is my name from?
Ke taha kiloko baboong?
From Babo?
Go White Twenty Eight.
From White Twenty Eight.
Go munkapé omutuna wabatuba Northwest Umbrella Fire Protection Association.
I'm also eh, under Northwest Umbrella Fire Fighters or Associations.
Ke mezi batwa kamo Boujanaala?
I'm representing the residents of Boujanaala.
San hapili di uwe ke gata kure, roza maroba misa ikakofa batu baba lusi te ngapilo abona kame lulo.
Eh, I would like to request that we must eh, eh, have a moment of silence eh, in respect of the people who lost their lives due to these eh, fires hazards.
Aroba misa ndichoro? Ki ala bo.
Thank you.
Nsa ya, nsa di tokubuaka adota training.
First point, training issues.
Re la leba levelo kore nra ba traina, empabu tata ki di, ki, 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 ki di equipment.
We do have students who, eh, who, whom we are training, but we got eh, a challenge of equipments.
Ra eleza hori rekabe rekisana lirina kaka bunji, empasala harana di equipment, re berekisana yang, lirina katedi, resina serkatu san kaso.
We wish to work hand in hand with other countries, but we can't do that because we don't have implements or tools of trade.
Ke kamohre kupan parlamenté hore, irithuse, ka hunne kamo to atama aku faunela, aku ra rokolale mulo, otswane zuhoro obolale se palawa sa horo oho timamulo o.
Eh, we would like to eh, request parliament to assist us. Look, if somebody calls for assistance eh, in order for one to go and assist in extinguishing the fire, you must have a vehicle to drive to that place.
Eh, ki sersinan so?
We don't have vehicles.
Batu abantibaluza mapilo abona kahore, harina di, di, di troke eh, ha, rena doza hutusa.
Many people die because we don't have equipments or tools of trade.
Baholo, ka huta ruwaka belika di farmers, wada ba otu ba shela, inke man tu ba lo ko ba lo ko malapengabon, wada ba otu ba tu ba lusi te mahai.
Honourables, I hear you are talking about farmers, but what, what, what do you say about eh, those who burned in their homes? Those who lost their eh, their houses?
Last month, last, last year, we narekara di kolomasiu.
Last year, we received calls during the night.
Na kana ke twa kilo, kilo, kilo kaka la kohutu samulo ko Mukwase.
We went from a very far distance and heading to Mukwase to extinguish fire there.
Resina, mresina, harana di balawa, harana doza hutimamulo.
No vehicles, no equipments to fight the fire.
Karu zena goritchez ilo horu hunoko shili, batu wasna, mbasna.
When we arrived there, everything was down to ashes.
Parlamenté rekupa tuso ya lu na kadi lo tedi ja.
Parliament assist us with those tools?
Kona kushile man tu, ali sixteen.
Sixteen houses burnt.
Tusoe eh, ribilen raiki, raaki kantate mahalo kapanadi ra godi.
Eh, we were assisted by the place where Mr. Mahano was employed.
Batu barnera kana kubafa di jole malawo lize di.
We managed.
Palamenté batu bao, arika ba tusaka eh, kapi.
We managed to give those people eh, food and mattresses and, but those people, they need some more eh, assistance.
Na kineki sagesta hore, hona lidi office ze di nyan, haro kutu nedi plake teu, leha ika naplagenyana enyan nyana, maru batu ba itu hore, kaba la lidi blokamilo, bayako plake ngueu.
I think eh, I'm suggesting that we must have eh, even pilot eh, eh, places which will assist these people if they are encountering such problems.
Nta we kape di ranka batu belu horu mbasi sa di plaza, kosi agasi tuwa lo ngote, ayaya aywe misana le mutu olu horu omone alimamulo.
Eh, what are we doing with those who are burning our farms? Because the chief cannot go and confront that person.
San kake horu kosi kato ma aru uta, uta stepaka mutu, ah, kosi kana ilo kwa misana lena ko kodona.
Eh, when a chief takes a steps against that person, is, is the chief expected to be the one who is facing that person eh, in a court of law?
Ke kamohu batu bao nebe lo kore, ba fela mata di keisawa ne, di fela mokuwe kaboru mutu kana mata horu, ayek, ayokoto every day, aywe misana le mutu maru, kusna se pesesi di ruwa.
That is why our people eh, they end up losing hope because they don't have means to attend eh, time and time eh, court sessions.
Nta we kape ke ko uwe kadi programeta ko skolo.
The other thing I would like to raise is the school programs.
Na kilo kamohelo ki kama hore?
I kamohelo.
Ke tatu la pilu kueza di programeta ko skolo, ndiaka ki di tomi.
I commit myself to do such prosem, eh, programs at school as I've already started.
Ka hore, ke tahu re ba na ba sukolo, kahu ta uli musha, uba bolela kadi troke eh, kota abu troka ba di lo, ba kona kuhutu abu toka, kula le mutu omutu na mo kubou.
I think eh, as a youth, the learners, they listen eh, to you eh, 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 as a youth, when you approach them and or eh, make them aware about certain things and give them certain information eh, other than an elderly person.
Baholo, batu batendi batu osa, batu batendi batu tokofala kabunji, eslo ngasire nan tere mulo we, mulo we, maru kusna se peseri sibona.
People are still going to die because we are just talking and doing nothing.
Rukopa horu, hona ilvi kato tese di siwa, reska ko pa na fela, ebere sa boni di feedback.
Something must be done. We, we cannot gather and talk and no feedback.
Ki wela kape koya training?
Back to training.
Baholo, ndiaka kineki wilo horu ra bataku traina batu mpa harana di tirish, kawa na omutsera aylo traina batu wa, ndiaka retraina babanjano. Mutu ha isna kwalify, omutza ilo traina mutu mo, oto ko melaki ma mutu o, rekupa di fandi fo kulo.
We are training other youth and then after they have qualified, nothing is happening to them, nobody is taking care of, of them. Please take note of that.
Kula le nto we kape elu kore, ke, ke tu ba bu roko tata.
Another challenge.
Batu baruna ba 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 di farmers, halina di fire breaking, eh, rekopa hore.
Fox Thomas doesn't have fire breakings?
Ra itu horu baba otaku ra re, na kina chela teya hore, ki patela diu te.
Some would say, no, I don't have money to, to pay for this.
Ke kamor nere talulano la horu rekupa hore governmenté.
We are, we have a plan, that government should.
Batu ba watse baba la li di plastedi le momula o, rekupa hore governmenté.
They must eh the 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 farmers who are having farmers legally, there there must be some fees which they are paying, which. Not everybody can afford eh some, they do wish to assist, but they 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 can't. Some of them lost their livestock. Many people are dependent on on their livestock. So imagine after the livestock has been, how is it going to survive? Fire is important. Some use fire to to cook. Make sure that when you make fire, there is nothing next to that fire which can exacerbate eh the problem. Thank you. I I I think I think we will work together to to fight this. Ah another last point. I thank you. Together, we can win. When you see the neighboring farm burning, don't just look and say, no, it's not mine. You must assist because next time it will be you looking for something from that eh farm. I thank you. Eh, I would like to greet the parliament eh delegation, our chiefs. And the public at large. Sunny Boys, Rooney. From what thirty-six? Rastenburg local municipality. Save our species eh within Makhaleseberg biosphere. We, as nature lovers. Some of the people go to the mountain. Eh, I'm staying on the mountain and people. And they threw everything there in Makhaleseberg. Because people don't, they throw stuff there eh they they don't have the knowledge that a bottle or a plastic can cause fire on itself. It's not a match eh 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 stick only which causes fire. When the fire, the fire engulfed the mountains. We are ignorant because we think, because we are. That fire is coming down to us as well. I would like to propose that in the amendment eh eh of the bill. Look, the mountains, you must take note of the mountains because you can't make a fire. Eh eh unless you have a hiding drill, which you you will need to apply for it. Teach the eh the children at school eh give them the knowledge that we, the people, we are the ones who are causing fire. Can also cause fire because people are throwing cigarette ends randomly. Eh, I I I would like to ask parliament to implement eh things which will assist eh during fire as speedily. As an affected person, all the residents within that the Makhaleseberg biosphere, of which is a critical life. I don't want to see anything dying, whether it's plant, human being, animal, and so forth. Or it's not just a mountain. Raise this issue because it is it is not just a mountain. It has two billion years eh existence. Teach also the adults because there are people who are eh who are not aware about the danger of fires. I thank you.
I'm Tavis Otchavani. To the leadership of the village and community at large. I want. I'm from what thirty-six, Kobos Fontaine. I would like to raise this point.
Yes, as a consent citizen, like Mavani, Tavini, Shwaya, Kaswan.
Yesterday, the Kaswanie mountain was burning. I said to my friends, we have to go there and assist as the area is surrounded by the lodges. As I am from the farm areas, eh those people have that thinking that they are not eh affected. It's the area of the business, business people who are staying there.
So in the Gere, at least the parliament eh push our municipalities. At least they have some initiative, training for youth.
I'm suggesting that the government should assist in terms of trainings because some youths are not aware of such things. Got a long lengthy, long grasses, so should it burn? It's going to be disaster. The municipalities, they are responsible to where the people who are supposed to clear the grass along the road. Due to the very same reasons that I have already mentioned. That's why you see the youth sitting just idling, not helping or assisting because there's lack of training.
Even even this thing, any firefighters, yes, somebody like a friend of mine over there is a firefighter.
Yes, the 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 salary is not enough. That's why you see people who, most of the people are not interested in this fire eh fighting because there is no motivation in terms of money. I am also saying that parliament should help, assist in terms of training as everybody needs that training. Even those those areas that are affected by the fires eh in in most cases, we we can't assist. There is this fire station which is which is built in Patima, they say it's worth four million. Even eh the household that I'm staying, it doesn't look the part. We are of the opinion that that truck was going to assist. Even the security is no longer there, that it's just standing as a white elephant. We are requesting parliament to eh 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 put pressure for that station to work. Thank you very much. Pavelo Peleru, greetings to you all. From Ikhachen, Pochistroom Extension eleven. I am very concerned and hurtful when whilst I'm standing here, I'm requesting from our parliament. If I can remember since I was in this training, there was a day. Where there was a a very eh big fire which was even approaching the area that we are residing on. But our, yes, our PP was not enough, but we had to fight that fire. Eh, at the moment, you are staying permanently in Fenterzdo because we have noted many things. The municipality is not doing their duty. If we didn't eh assist on that day, there should have been a disaster. I am requesting that parliament should come with a plan to help us and to assist the others in terms of training. And to reduce the unemployment rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Pavelo. Eh, Stoki. Eh, what is that? What is that? Eh eh I'm I'm addressing you, you're pointing somebody else. No, no, but no, but I'm addressing you, Stoki. I don't understand why am I addressing you and you're pointing somebody else? I'm taking the last round. You are the first to stand and you're going to be the last to speak. You know the reason, sorry. Eh, but Melibun, that I'm going to request to take the last round of hands. I'm doing this because some of the issues are really a reputation. Eh, we value all your inputs. But everybody talks about training, we've noted that. Lack of water and resources to extinguish the fires. So I'm taking a last round, preferably five. Your hand was up. Aye, 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 aye. You sit there and you raise your hand and then you are called before you occupy. No, there's only one person here. No, there's only one person here.
K'itafela, oka, la, stulu, oka, na, le, cha, da, it's not good to go.
So, you and your friends are green there in the corner to take the, the center.
Oh, na, le, it's not good to go, it's not good to go.
Do not move my men, go, go, let's go. On, go, pa, on, go, pa, go, eh, ma, like, go, eh, ma.
Eh, ma, eh, eh, this, eh, eh, it's not good to go, it's not good to go.
Right, so you'll be the second.
I'm not going to.
You'll be the second, when?
I'm not going to.
Motor, we will be the third.
Oh, 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 motor, we will be the third.
Can we get the last hand?
I'm not going to, it's not good to go, I'm not going to, I'm not going to.
Okay, make you, eh, that, it's not good to go.
Go, eh, yeah, 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 meh.
It's not good to go. My, and that, it's not good to go. It's not, salam, me, olumra.
Oh, oh, re, re, eh.
My men, I'm not going to, it's not good to go.
Eh, eh, it's not good to go, it's not good to go.
No, no, I'm not going to, it's not good to go. It's not good to go, eh, eh. And, like, eh, eh, I'm going to be very strict with time. I'm not going to, it's not good to go, it's not good to go. Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not. Right, okay, these are the last speakers, and then, eh, Eric Tavostok will give us a lecture and prayer.
K'idi, bui, it's not good to go, eh, eh, eh.
That, eh.
Eh, Honorable Program Director, I declare, you who do medicine, and the House at large, and simply say, all protocols observed. Sir, I declare, you who do medicine, loudly. I also want to particularly signal out, eh, you, who is it, Arona?
Grandpa, eh, who do medicine, eh, you, who is it, Arona?
Lila, like, eh, Kumomahano.
My name is Kumomahano.
I am representing quite a few organizations.
Yeah, it's, eh, it's not good to go, eh, eh.
Eh, both business sector, civil society as well. From the business sector side, I'm part of a company group called Beyond Mining Solutions.
Beyond Mining, eh, eh, solutions, eh, key, eh, it's not good to go, eh, eh, eh.
Another entity is called Akakumo Financial Services.
Eh, Akakumo, eh, Financial Services.
From the civil society space, I'm part of an, an initiative called Solaboto Foundation.
Well, eh, eh, it's not good to go, eh, eh.
But today, as I speak, I'll be talking from the perspective of the North West Umbrella Fire Protection Association.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to, eh, eh, Umbrella Fire Association, yeah, North West.
As the deputy chair to, that Eric Stogie, the president.
Yeah, no, eh, eh, it's not good to go, it's not good to go.
Honorable Chair, I feel intimidated when you react like that.
Yeah, no, eh, 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 eh.
Yeah. That is okay, eh, very, very, very briefly, I'm going to do my level best not to repeat all that has been said, so.
I'm not going to, eh, 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 eh.
Honorable Chair, I always see that when we go into other provinces, our traditional leaders are referred to as kings. Even when we refer to other traditional leaders overseas in England, we refer to them as kings. But what surprises me is that when you come to, to North West, you don't refer to our traditional leaders as kings. You call them chiefs.
Okay, okay.
So yeah, the fire associations.
We want to propose that instead of referring to them as associations, but that we rather amend them to be fire protection authorities. And subsequent to that, we facilitate a process of incorporating them as state-owned entities that have a fair representation from national level all the way to a local level whereby there is a joint participation and joint level of accountability between government, private sector and civil society.
Que si señor, resquele va dizer de asociación, ¿no? Que ya cananeki, que arba dize un botati, jo bo, jo, 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 lanswa, melélo. Kama ikhomo, ah, jo reba ze, reba zeñemo puxom, hosimulaku puxom ya, ya, ya na ha, ya provencie, lea di puxo selahay.
We've been talking a lot about the district development module that is currently being piloted in various areas of the country. We can start at that level as well. And perhaps maybe also for purposes of accountability, perhaps maybe from office of the D D G, we can even ensure that officials are also allocated specific deliverables and specific areas with performance contracts as well. So that if people are not performing, they can be held accountable. And there is a rightful human resource process to replace those people if they are not performing as per their performance requirements.
Eh, ya ka, eh, ke, buile hori. Y vila rekaba jusatata le modi puxo selahay, rekasi mula ra ransha nale, eh, D D G, ra monsorbon, ¿no? ¿Ba tuva? Harika ba zea, eh, ra ba tapa, ba dira, ra ba bella, milau. Eva chuanetze unkwe, la de la linitzila, zeba chuanetze unkwe de ra gatso ne, famasak di riyalo, eh, vera ba clavesclac.
My last point has to do with strategic planning.
Sorry?
My last point has to do with strategic planning, planning ahead.
Ya no ke, eh, nklaya mia bofe lo, ki nklaya, pone le pele ma ano, ah, lasa machanalo hori, farinze rezoletzi, kopelewa, re tla di rayan.
Underneath that, the first point has to do with issues of self-sufficiency. Meaning, how do we take this particular ministry and position it such that it is not a liability to the state and to the civilians? But we rather, where opportunities exist, try to translate it into some form of equity of some sort. For example, a lot of corporates get to talk about what we refer to as the green economy.
Ya no ke, le kanya hori, eh, chuanetze re lebe kya, hori, le fa palé, eska namu kuroe, mobuxo. Re kala bela di se la di, ¿no? Ki insel kas di ra kala fa palé, eh, le waritle fa palé kas e clacixia, di lo zako chuanaleho di rusa di lo zacla.
A simple example, we've got a serious problem of sewage. We can easily take that sewage without even tapping into current non-functional infrastructure of water waste treatment plant. Even put up containerized wat- water waste treatment plant solutions or facilities. Take some of that wet waste, you know, separate the solid waste, take gray water, use some of that water, purify it up to a state of being able to utilize some of that water to actually be able to, to, to put down some of these fires. The technology is there. But that is just an example amongst many of how we can start to monetize some of the elements of the broader ecosystem and taking some of the challenges that we have and translate them into an economy that can subsequently or in return even back to finance the very same challenges that we are having. So that we are not always going with a hand, you know, and a bow and a begging hand, but rather it is a give and take.
Motlala, arze meji adi kere kwen. Ah, varneka konah, wata, re konen, hotlosa, eh, de kere kweni, re di kauhanzele meji. Meji ala agadi ri shua, montlegia, kuka timamelelo, le di lozidi nchape tumotuo yalo dal.
And the, the, the last point underneath that subtopic or heading is influence of policy. And I'm going to give you an example. If you get to look at the sustainability agenda of the mining sector, whom by the way is holding a big chunk of the land in the northwest province. A lot of the times when mining houses get to talk about a sustainability agenda, they have what is called a mining recovery fund. A lot of the times that mining recovery or mining community recovery fund is tapped into, it is only when the mining operation shuts down. Now, if a mine's life of span is thirty years or more, it means that we cannot touch that mine in thirty years' time. So meaning some of us in our lifetime would never be able to even see or tap into those resources. So let's get to look at other alternative industries that are existent in our areas of influence. For example, in the province like mining and say, how do we at a national level start fostering conversations to even ensure that if it means that we get to influence D M R, to say when you formulate some of your S L Ps as mining companies, a certain proportion, let it go towards restoration of the environment, investment in the environment with an immediate effect.
Are le beni lo di chuanale di mine, ya gar na di mine di se di simon northwest, eh, di mine di na lidi zela, za hui di rela di lo zabo, ne ho chuanale ho tlatswa meji, di lozidi inti ya. Le re na, re lesa chava, re ne lidi zela za, re konah ufi kela di lozidi. Motlala, ufi keli mine onale kontra gaya de ti es. Redla fi kela, wata, re tla konah ufi kela di lozidi, kliotzi ki mine di fe la, eh, mine no utzalit. Fam mine usanza nozila, hara le kela la hori, reka di rusa di lozidi.
Eh, I believe that other inputs will be submitted, they've been writing. Eh, with all that being said, thank you, kuti seka hori, di daudis nanse boka, di si wa in honor of the loads, and therefore together we can do more. I thank you, Mr. Chen.
You're right, Mr. Chen, you've been here before, let's work together. Kala bo.
Please be on to you. I'll be very shortly here.
Que tla buaka ukutsanet tata na?
I've seen on your amendment bill on page eight, you speak of, eh, financial implications.
Mo, mo la trumon o, ubuile ka di, di tamrahtse, no kore kete di amanaleka di chelete.
So you mentioned there's a budget there.
Obuile leka ba, budget, te kanyetu.
Oh, sorry. Mporamukopa from Moritili Local Municipality, what six?
Ke mporamukopa, ho to akomoritili municipality, what six?
The budget that you mentioned there, we want to know how much is it?
Te kanyetu, ho sa budget te obuile inkayone wekwe tembo, reba tla hui tuho re na kibuka i.
Does it also include, eh, building more fire station?
Ah, ya, ka re di se lo ho kaha, kaha hiwa, ha di tey she ne se di nchape za di station, za za za, ba timamollo.
Thank you.
Kala bo, ha, mina han.
Greetings to the honorable members up there. The community at large.
Eh, matapaka, ke, ke chua kela Costa, di buti se leki.
I am from Costa.
Ki bere kisa, kenali di okho, li di unku, li di buti.
I do have a livestock. That is the location and that area. It's not only me, but I am requesting that government. We are requesting the place or the land so that we can take our livestock to that farm. Buti se leke, is my name.
So, di, di, di fula molete she ne, play kenyane di fula for you. I get a level like I is a two hundred and thirty hectares.
The area where our livestock is grazing, it can be plus minus two hundred and thirty hectares.
So, inya ne, ka, ya ka hufi swatla kayan. Mangle mang, reha uhuwato, reha fale wisi, ho hau sheba tla kayashakampaya, shakadina kodi jia no kote.
The area is very small. As you can see now at the season, fire seasons, they end up not having the grazing land.
Obo kra, eh, de hori, le, le poli, kaha inna mfo te. Ke, la, play diya, ya ho chuanale, fo mabiké, mabikarona, shakampel.
Even the area where they are grazing at that moment is just at the graveyard as it is not fenced. Due to lack of, eh, enough space for grazing, this livestock end up reaching the locations. And it's not everybody who has the love for the livestock. So it seems like we, we, we put our livestock in the people's yards or in the locations. That is why I am requesting government that should there be, eh, some farms can at least remember us so that we can get some farms to put our livestock. Thank you very much.
Akilu di medise mukun. Kere halala, bumme halala. Kere tarilive to hori ra iharre layan, women's month.
This is women's month, let's say, then, let's show it as women that this is almost the end of the women's month.
Okay. Kere bumme kere halala, let's have confidence.
Halala, we can lead. Bumme, we can lead.
Okay, ba holo, nenekera da, holi le bucha, parlamenta kere, ki tule kiri attenda di parlamentarians, eh, she ne, but they are all not different because some, they give us the document today, but at least lo na kya, weka some they have achieved, achieved in the previous days.
I would like to thank you because in most cases I do attend this public hearing and this one is little bit different from the others that I have already attended. Because at least you managed to give out some documents prior, the, the, the meeting.
Another thing, ne kiri, ra iya moche la, this amendment.
We support this bill.
And another thing, eni lo hori ne kibata hui, yes, I'll align myself with the first speaker, habuaga di fire, ke mbaba tusamba.
Ki te pa, te pa, nyali di buitze, se si ndi buile jaka, se si di buaga, ba ele mureki ba batu sanjaka, ba timamollo.
I suggest there should be a clause that cover those people who are risking their life without any nothing.
Ki chua la hori, konale karuana, eh, lo hori ya kareza ba tuva, ba ele hori ba tusa, ba tuva wa, ana kilemoni lo, basnasipé.
And I think here we are talking about fire.
Fa no, buaka mulino.
I was expecting I would see people who are working with fire.
Ki ne kiri belletze, ho bona, ba tuva ele hori, ba dira sana, ba dira kamollo, like ba timamollo.
So they are the people who are supposed to respond, hori, how much people they need to assist them.
Inne bo, ne ba ele hori ba arabe la, hori ba tla ka ba tuva lewa ka i, ba ba ka ba tusam.
It's so painful to hear people who are risking their life with fire, where there are people who have the resources and any money, but the people who are working more without giving anything, let today be a coward.
Ho, pisabu, ho, tata, ho bona ba tuva ele mure, ki ba, ba dira kamolli, fe la, konale ba tu, ba ba duelwa, ba ne ba swansaba ba diré, inle bo ne ba ba diran tu, inu. Ki ne kiri, reho, inpiyo, ine karseska, fitlamo kuchon.
So, ne kibapa hori, let there be accredited certificate for those people who are volunteering for, who timamollo.
Aba tuva, ba fi weh ditificating, se di wa letang, hori, like accreditation certificates.
And I think the government should go to the people who, who are, those people who are under mobo, ne hori. They should know the boundary, hori ba fi kela fuka i, hori ba chunza ba berege, but it is not worth, hori ba tu ba berege, without P P.
Ho, ba, ba, bo ne, ba ekoba tumba ele mure, ba dira motlaska bo ne, ba konohotlaluhanya, hori ba tu, ba, ba fi kela ka i, konne ha, 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 siama, hori ba tu, ba diré, kuantla, ha di P P se le kani.
And another thing I want to raise, I just want to check to the parliament, hori. The, the resources in the area is allocated according to the population of the number or what?
Ki utu rechape, ho tuwa mobo parlamenta, unkore, ah, di di ri swate, di tava ke lozete, ele hori diya neelwa, di neelwa, ho tuwa ka palo, eh, ele, ho libela palo, ya ba tuva ele mure, itlo ba tusana, palo, ya ba tu, ki one, eh, proba.
And another thing, eh, ki leka hori, cheka, ki hori, since this thing, ya fire, ilide, ki, how much things they have achieved and for now, what things we should deal with?
Ki le ba tla chape, ho libela, hori, isale, eh, lina leno lanta melino, le simuluzi. Ki se va se si, ki, ki di finza di lozidi va se si ba di fi kela ledi.
And eh, we have a, eh, lo hori, le ro na ba tu, we should reto de. Maybe we should avoid illegal connection.
Amotlakas.
Is amotlakas.
Le ro, le na, nklaya omrechape, ele mure ki ba tla hui, tla xisa, le onegi hori. Le ro na, ya ka ba tu, we have to learn and avoid this, eh, eh, illegal electricity connection.
Because last day we have a problem, ya hori, me, utu ile akohete ba na, then ile fe la, fe la, abua, ato shupanafkela, ele hori, mkuishi.
Just like in the, eh, la, last time, the, eh, other adult left their kids unattended. When she returned, on her return, she found out that the fouls, the, the house was on fire.
Now is time to come with another mechanism. Without electricity, what mechanism can we use?
Are tlen katse la, umu chape, ele mure, ka i di ri sa, far sa di ri simotlakas, ah, hunelizilemo, ka i di ri sa.
Even the matches, without matches, what can we use?
Kuantla ha mollo, matches, reka di ri sa, inmogo, mondja, matches.
Okay, I thank you.
Kala boha.
Mayor, arbolena li.
Ma, kanalina ki mang? Ntsuaki li di amukwena?
From Xhetsing.
Ho tuwa kwa Khetling.
I'm a what commit member.
What commit member?
Ne ktsa ba ho, district, pa memukwena, kutli le hori wa tlatla wakzo. So ne ktsa kutli hori, halala, bumma, makar, hey, eri kimo toke.
Eh, dumela, badula su dino barona?
Greetings to our chairpersons.
Eh, matapizo mboleti.
The community at large.
Kala dumelis.
Greetings to all of you.
La hari le ra fi talat.
Even though we were delayed.
Well, ki konohoto pa, se be di se taru ya na.
I managed to gather a bit.
Eh, ki ne ki kupa, hori. Mo, badula su dino barona?
I, eh, I was requesting from, eh, our leaders there, up there.
Hori, eh, budget de itui li. Itui te, se chava.
If there, eh, there is a, the budget which is allocated for the community or for the benefit of the community.
Anke le banale se chava, itui muri poletzalou.
Give it to the community, direct it to the community, not into your pockets.
Kaya itui, ki piro ku, ku, ye, ye, ki bolela ye, ka hori, re na le di project, se di sa fele.
I know this is heartening because we do have many projects which are incomplete.
Di bereka, six months, seven months, di chelate, maradu, osain de kontra katali es.
It can be six to seven months, but the contract which was initially signed, it was meant for three years.
So, ki bolela, aranaka piro ku, ku, ka hori, re na le project, ya land care.
I am very heartbroken because we do have the project of land care.
I, I think it really is.
And we haven't benefited at all.
Ino fe la, fe la, bole ba li, bo lan, re na ne relebe leto, re tla ri de la, di kampa za di polo, holo, barborela limits.
It just disappeared while, whilst we thought it was going to benefit us.
Se se insa bofe lo, se kutosu bolela.
Lastly.
Ki kope la, badula su dino barona?
I am requesting our leaders up there.
Le hele rumi bo, ngoli rendi follow-ups, hori, lo konoh, bonor di lozidi, a verek.
Do the follow-ups, follow up on the programs that you have initiated.
Le bea no, ki bolela bea na, eri taka kumbi, eri kili gamu, no, 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 utlizzi, uti bilelezi la, mo iya wa, kapa.
Even on our, our way here, there is another area which is already burning as we speak.
Eh, bea no, ne ki kope la, hori, at least iliga sa, ma tusonya na, hori, mololo kati, ma kara kbo, ah, na moto, anything, ku dimu arabo.
We are requesting that at least you can try to assist because there is no one who's assisting as the livestock is within that fire.
Kala bo.
Thank you very much.
Nagin na, Jackson Pavudi, from Watfor.
Is my name, from Watfor.
Are there municipal officials here?
Bateng, ba tla ke di ba baton kumas palé.
This one, where, where there's fire?
Moses Scottan.
Moses Scottan. There are no officials here.
Ah, ba ya ba tla ke di ba baton kumas palé, mo Moses Scottan.
Chilis, can we, chilis? Chilega?
Chilega.
Can we, can we get the details of the, that day, Pavudi, and then imas advisors on the fire? Get people of the municipality to attend to that thing? Sure, thanks, so I like that.
Okay, um, kera ta, dumelisa, eh, nagin, Neville Motaun, ke taha, komoritile.
Neville Motaun, I'm from Britile, I'm greeting you all.
Eh, ki mete, study group, sa di famase, ko elenyahor.
Representing study group of farmers in our area.
Eh, nagi wonaka, bidé, a chota kanya, isore, a kenyaz, ma gi wonaka, a chota kanya.
This bill, it got some loopholes.
Eh, ka her, na lohoseba mo, eh, di, di documente zeri, go, na renzi di go.
As we normally look at some documents from the, the, the foreign countries.
Kenalu, bo na, hori, eh, moto, asenia, mo ho ba, 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 tahi sa, hori, na moto, oh, eh, bo tawaya, eh, thoma, eh, eh, thoma ka jaraté, fe unko fi taka, ko, ko ka i.
I have noted that in those countries, some of, eh, the, eh, there is a, a number of years that is said to the people maybe who have, eh, didn't, who didn't adhere to the law. These people who are doing this are the well-known people and this is affecting us, the people who have livestock. If we can include number of years to say that should you not adhere with the law, this is the repercussions.
Kala bo.
Thank you very much.
Eh, kera ta dumelis, kera ta dumelisa, ba parlamenta.
Let me greet the parlamentarians.
Eh, mahoshi arena.
Our traditional leaders.
Eh, debata popanu.
The community at large.
Eh, nagin Moses Manamela.
Moses Manamela is my name.
Eh, ho tuwa kamo, Moritili Local Municipality.
From Moritili Local Municipality.
What five?
What five?
Kamofasa, ah, poshin chaube, pa wubedi magapan.
And ba kosin chauke, wa wa bubedi, magapan.
Eh, nagi supporta, bilieka, mukoi tla irengating.
I do support this bill as it is.
Le heke na le, ma tsue, ne, honya na, ka, ka na konya na, itli le inkayon.
Even though I have some concerns with the time which we, we, we received, the bill. When I look around us.
Eh, re na ba maspa la, o Moritili Local Municipality, arna, arna bo na.
We, as the municipality from Moritili, we don't have.
Eh, representative.
The representatives.
So, leka moso hoshi, eh, resana le, le botata wo.
Even from the traditional leader's side, we still have the same problem.
Ba tuva ele mure, ek di eh, bili eh.
Those, the people that we can say when this bill.
Eh, bili eh ne, ra ta, ki wonaka, chuanzo, eh, be di driver.
They were the ones who should be steering the ship in terms of this bill.
So, re na riya, wo de la.
We do speak.
Mara consultation eh, ina lunswe, ya horo, kare, ay sirifiki.
Fe la zela nyan, eh, ele hori buisa na kayone, ha isi ko pani.
So, ne ki kope la fe la, extension be nyan na.
I'm ja.
Extension eh, oru, communicate, le, le so hoshi.
I will request that there should be some sort of extension so that we can communicate with the traditional leaders.
Eh, the community is, is large.
Amo ho le se chava, ka kakareto.
Eh, ekava in a form of we- website.
Ekana, katse la, ya di website.
Ekava ka di radio.
Through the radios.
Eh, le mori tribal authorities.
Le ko, ma, ma kuchen, anu, aba, a, a, a di posi.
Leka mori maspalé.
As well as the municipalities.
Hori tava, yu duha le hori, e bucho.
So that this issue can be emphasized to see its importance.
And eh, eh, number two.
The second issue is.
Eh, ki zo go communal lending.
As I am from the communal land.
Eh, ele mure, ekava fasas hoshi.
Which is under the leadership of the traditional leaders.
Botata, ke to bomelo ya na.
The problem is how to sustain the land.
Se qua, hasia, dema, kauna di, di, redivizor, ki di bai.
The forest is not, doesn't have the bales.
So, mo ele mo ro, mollo, ho tuwa kamo, o konoh, o zelela kamo.
So there is no firebreakers.
So, neru kopa, hori, mu kwa oho, heli ra budget.
I am requesting that when you are doing, eh, this budget.
Le konoh, bo la, hori, rebode la ka di kwa.
We have to remember that we are talking about the forest.
Na di kwa ze, o, di meni, ji zu e pila na.
Is this forest well managed?
Eh, so, eh, wegi ona ele mure, bolela ka di training.
The other issue is about training.
The duties and responsibilities are in about, what would you want to participate in?
Our responsibilities to, for all of us who are going to partake in this.
Uto akodi.
From up there.
Fi tla bofa.
Up until at the bottom.
Eh, wegi a law enforcement.
The law enforcement issue?
Okar mo building, akavoni, define and penalties, kamu komo da wale.
Fe la jaka, si wisi se si, si wiles, itlalucite, ki mona kare, lilna, ka, ki mona mu kwa, o, ele hori kete la, ya kuotla o.
Eh, le di discipline, aru kauten procedures.
Le discipline, aru kauten procedures?
Eh, ka hori, narre le, eh, ba du, nagi le mulu mu ruvi.
S F fama?
Eh, ki reporta, poso hoshi, le go maspalé.
I'm reporting, mo, traditional leaders as well as municipality.
Ba tuva, eh, ba samu ku duel.
If they don't listen to me.
Ki lo reporta ka i.
Where am I going to report?
So, ne ki kope la hori.
I am now requesting that.
Horu banale website, hm?
There should be a website.
O, ele mure, ka konoh, complain, na re tla liya ba.
Where we can complain about this once.
Ki hona ele mu koi, ele mure, ra monita. Ki hona ilomu koi lomore, ra monita.
That will be the form of monetary.
Okay, mwe.
The other issue.
Ne kikupela ba ne video, o asia seza ekte.
Ah, hunne le ba tba ilomu, ba tato kome la mula onu.
Hor wa implementi.
Oliver lohro, zimu atirisom.
Kahore mona ora obiya.
As we, we put the act.
Mara ma fe longu fe bezosale reg.
But at the end of the day, the act doesn't work.
Refele za re re, re repuso ha e dirale se.
We end up saying that government is not working.
Refele za riya bos tarate, ro starai, kare tive la di koloi.
Then end up picketing.
So, ne kikupela hor, monitare nware na, au, auwe, auwe, ba toba iti.
Ah, hunne le zila, elu kuri ya, katu ba, ba tva guna ba iti.
Hori, starai ke hasesolbe se.
Hori mekwan to, enu, hyina, bullying, hyiri tuse kasepe.
Ah, ho ba ne li di office, te lomore kala la muto, ona ele ra uki.
Let have the offices where we can complain, then head.
So, le ona mwe ya ma fele kira ta mo e bolela.
Ya ma fele, e kira ta kubua kayone, lastly.
Kere di overseas.
Ba, ah, this overseas of the law.
Nkeba ba nele na, for six months, ba tseba ire odi, tiba bono hor na, di plague etze di lenka, ekte ya ba berke.
Abasi we na, koe ekana kadi, kwe disa di kana six, ba di re tuno, elu kuri ke odi, kowa na hala kura, asenos kaba tsa tusaa.
Kahore, kamkore mulewala, kana nineteen eighty implied ze, nimo motirisom.
Jaka sezenze, ulkuleho hori, etze motirisom, kana nineteen ninety eight?
Mara renawa wa, ngitsa porko di komila lending, ay nari, aridi.
But us, like the people who are from the communal land, it's for the first time we hear about it.
So, kupela hor, aiwe, le awareness, aiye boschavi.
Ai fi telle ba tubo tle, ba tuba iti siwi.
Yalebo.
Thank you very much.
Have you activated your people to look into that fire first?
No sir, we don't have funds.
You are?
No sir, we don't have funds, we don't, we can't pay for petrol.
But you have petrol to come here.
I hiked. Um, madam, please time me, I've got three hours according to the honorable chairman.
Eh, kikupali fe na ko. Last we say, kene, diura ili ta. Once I'm in good luck.
It's, it's on tape sir.
Eh, i, 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 i recorded. Eh, o, o, re, 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 sa, wete zuje mi. Oh yeah, so.
Good, good day everybody, my name is Eric and welcome to everybody here.
Nage Erici, continue.
Ah, kosi ma be, ah, kosi hasibun, Mister Chairman, Honorable Chairman, Honorable Members, ladies and gentlemen.
Eh, kedu meze kosi ma be, kedu meze kosi hasibun, eh, modulasitulo, le kemeze.
Mister Chairman, as I've been saying for the last three days.
Fa kene ki, le ting, mo malazina maravo, o tle a.
I believe that the North West Umbrella Fire Protection Association.
Eh, kedu melawo ya karle, eh, umbrella, ya North West Fire Association.
Is the only umbrella fire protection association in the country representing all tribal authorities.
Eh, ki, mukaka, olino si fela, o ilomona, o emetin, eh, basa kosi.
This is through the auspices and the assistance of kosi ma be, and his team.
Keka tuso, ya kosi ma be, horu kune ya.
And we are most grateful for the support that he has given us this year to try and prevent loss of lives.
Re, ratamo mulewala, horu tusamun kenyaa, kati vela, eh, di ntsuta ba.
The loss of livelihoods, the loss to the environment, and to ensure food security for our people.
Eh, tlo nga ba tu, tikuloko, linthaya tamelo, kadi jo.
In English, they say, monsosabusi hu, olabo kha kosi.
In English, they say, those who assisted me during dark times or dark days, I will thank them after I've succeeded thereafter.
The reason I'm saying this is I have to acknowledge one of our oldest volunteer firefighters and member of the Fire Protection Association.
Hori kibu ya luka rata, abholala, o lebo ka, mungwe, waba holo, ba, ele mbaitaupi, monkinyaa, eh, mukaka o, wa, balon samelo.
This gentleman, at the age of seventy-one years, walked into the Mahalisberg Mountains with a backpack to go and put out a fire yesterday. It was a second fire in two days.
Odile, modiles, sumashu, pale mungwe, o tseri backpacke, ayak, o tabe nyama, kalisie, aylu kutusa, koloan samuelo.
Mister Jonathan Dawson, please rise and have everybody, please give him a round of applause.
Muto kere, Jonathan Dawson, ema robo ne, eh, mufelio kofi bato.
Mister Chairman, I know that's not part of a presentation, but this is part of a point and, eh, eh, proof, a portfolio of evidence. I've brought a living portfolio of evidence.
Yanu he, kai ito hori, seki si bua kaya na, hasi, amanyo opa, le tka nyava kaisa, ditisi nyokotla ma ikudu. Fela, kilitsebu, bu, bu supiyobu tse la.
Sitting next to him is his wife, who does invaluable work as a volunteer, unpaid, doing the work of the South African Weather Service.
Mo uba bilele, mo saniya, le ne, eh, le na, kimi itaupi, monkinyad, di roe.
Giving us early warnings to our community in the province.
Wa tusan usirelisa, di totu, le scharamo province.
This is with regard to fire warnings.
Ke itla ma ba bile, di demo shon, za, za mele.
I'd like Mrs Dawson to stand and also be given a round of applause.
Kere, mu, fuma kadi Dawson, emela, robo ne, depo.
The type of thing, Mister Chairman, that Mrs Dawson sends to us, is for example, today.
O pienu.
We have an orange fire danger index in the Bujanaala district.
Renale, eh, tari musi to, mo Bujanaala.
And she, and the message is as follows.
Malaita go.
Very high fire danger in the area.
Ke le felele, ubarunle, mukoti nyamelelo.
High temperatures and variable wind.
Me, eh, eh, di, mofutumaala, eh, le, kota bolelo, eh, joint temperature ra.
No burning.
Eh, kaku na, mo cha.
Please be aware and report fires immediately to the fire station and community groups.
Yanu he, se a, okonale, di pe, kela se di diroamo, di fire station, ne okonale, kape di di kopa, sa balon samuelo.
Please add a location pin wherever possible.
Eh, ah, hunne le ma fe lo, ah, annango ne, ta kona ka.
And then every time there's a message, there's an important one at the bottom that changes, today's one says, there's.
Eh, humale, hume mo kuna lense, okonale, malaita, o pienu ya ka, eh, o kaini fa mukala.
There's a fire behind us, near Kwas.
Kunalimullo, momra harano, moka filko Kwas.
That ladies and gentlemen, is a useless message.
Eh, kimo laiza, o sarin sippe.
You have to say the date, the time, who you are, where the fire is, and what is burning, and what assistance, assistance is required.
Refe datei, refelina lahahu, refelale felela hor mulo uka kai, lewutusu, kifin, ewitoka.
Honorable Chairman, I'm also honored today to be supported by the fire chiefs in the Bujanaala area.
Eh, kira ta, eh, kothaisa or kemo tlotlo, koe mono kingi, eh, ba holo, ba, nakatuya koloan samuelo, mo Bujanaala.
It is very heartening to know that we have the support of people like Chief Ramotoala, Chief Tswewu.
Chief Tswewu.
And Re Khokong.
Le Re Khokong.
As you can remember, in the other two districts, we had zero support.
Whati districtin zeri zee, haranali kemo no king, enti ya.
This makes us a formidable fighting team.
Yanu se si di ra horo renne, se kapa, sesilem, esinalimma, kla, sa koloan samuelo.
Bahai suki kupa hor, le blela ntwe nus.
Eh, I would like to mention one thing to you.
Le skana kana kore, harie mi muna renalidi budgete.
Don't think that as we are standing here, we do have budgets.
Kinze ku tava toha wa ngata banza ba gua, le komiti barele loko, kadi budgete di itla, diska ya kodi tenda re, leru narere ba tla kore retusi.
I heard some of the speakers say that the budget must come straight to the people, not through other routes.
Silo saru na hor, ta na kule resimula ko Dr Ruth, ra kongaka mudiri, Rafael Afa, kihore ma di hyayo.
Eh, our problem, which we have raised since the, eh, the beginning of this hearings, is that there's no budget.
Jaka reyemi muna rona, ritileka petrol ya rona, really volunteer at own cost, at own expense, and at own risk.
Reba itaupi, redirise ma dia rona, redirise petrol ya rona, na koya rona, jalujan, hard way.
Ma dia linkin, ayaku maspala, ayaku districti, ayaku maspala.
Money which is available goes to the municipality, goes to the district municipality.
My councilor, ba ba duting ba hola, di salary savon.
The councillors who are getting, eh, salaries.
Hanziin si haba isu kuru mula, king twayan, ba, ba mona mula ela botivi.
Eh, eh, they don't know what fire is, they only see fire on TV.
Habanhamusi, banghamusi wa kua i hela.
When, when they smell smoke, it's a cigarette smoke.
Yanu boni, kibona ba tweri ngopi lo ba rona, musi asing savon.
And they, we are, they are the ones who are, we are dependent on them.
Kione ntwe di zee kore, redsemur klu gua, lema lokuarona, khorba reyemele, ba lika kore, mula ona, ba ufe tole, khorba ri tusae, rona relba, ah, ibabu koni gupe.
Eh, kilona, oh, that is the reason why we've invited our members, so that they must come and make some, eh, eh, proposal, so that this law should be amended and the power must come to the people.
The first point that I want to make.
In kaya, eh, ekiba tla mwe di raki.
And now these are the formal points.
Kiti ntsa, tsa se mushoze.
We must make sure, following on what my deputy said, that we are looking after the disabled people.
Reswana zee, eh, re lebelele, in kaya kore, re lebe la, kota re kloko me la, ba tuba ba na ldiu kwe klo.
Eh, mume be ling, jalujan. We have to make sure that all our firefighters and all our volunteers are trained in South African sign.
Le kore, eh, o tle balon samuelo, ba, tiwa, kapu, eh, iti risamo, ya ma zo, kere le bo na kubie.
It is already very traumatic to go to a fire or to be involved in a fire when your house or animals are burning, and you can speak.
Yanu he, kutusa wotloko, ha, o yawa, monku ichang, kota di ruwa, eh, di kloko fa la fela, osa kono kubua.
How more so, if you cannot hear or you cannot speak?
Osa kono kubua, osa kone, u, uklu, kota kure.
It is not only our responsibility to do something for the disabled community.
Eh, hasibu i kara ba nojaro na fela, koka, eh, tusam, ba to, ba ba na ling, di kwe klo.
It is their constitutional right to expect us to look after them.
Ki mula utewo, oru laye ra, kore, reswana zee, re ba kloko me.
They have a right, in terms of the Bill of Rights, I think it's chapter two of our national constitution.
Banale di tswane lo, koyaka karo rona, ya wubedi, ya mula utewa na.
Mister Chairman, you said that we must repeat things about funding etcetera.
Urele kiska, buwale zadi ilu ma, ba bile, ma klole, kota ma di.
But you've heard me say on a couple of occasions, wano saling, osuela tarin.
Eh, you heard me that if, if, if I don't raise my concern, you all know about it.
We have the capacity to train all the people in our province.
Renalebo toni jokati sa, eh, ba tubo tle mo, professor niya ro.
Ki to pita kastuana kore, re unkutla la otsuakoko huten.
Yeah, eh, I will, I will say it in Swana, such that you can understand me better, even though you come from Kauten.
Renalebo kuni kore, riutabatuba rona, reba ze, reba bonsa, kadi practical kore, mulo utimi wa ya.
We do have the capacity to train our people, to take them and train them and show them how fire is being extinguished.
Oboni, kapo, uktuile, ma triniaka, banza ba gua, bariba timamulo, ba iti, banalebo khot.
Eh, you heard my trainees saying that, eh, they've been trained to fight the fire, they do have that capacity.
Ntwe ritive la, in nus.
The only thing standing on our way.
Ki ma di.
Is money.
Nyara, motomunkia zofala, di pe, di pe di.
Maybe I'm getting old, no, two, two things.
Ba tuba bomko maspala, Lego Provincial Disaster Management Centre.
Municipal, eh, eh, disaster centre.
Banalele nyazo, khorba ri tusae, kore re trine ba tuba rona.
They are undermining us, they don't want to assist us regarding, eh, our training, eh, our, our trainees.
Ki dirisa mahogo, atata, abuima, abu thoku.
I'm, I'm using strong words, very hectic words.
Ki ni kwe di ze kai, kinze ki akobona, ki kopa ki rapela.
How many months have, eh, eh, I've been approaching them, begging.
Kone ano, jaka kemi mwe, harso fumanituso horu kuma spala.
Till today.
Kapoko Provincial Disaster Management Centre.
Till today, eh, I was not assisted by municipality or disaster centre.
Kope ya rona itlo ba kore, li, kope kobo ali, National Minister wa Kopta.
Eh, our request is that you should talk to Kopta, Minister of Kopta.
Ablele, ba toba, welang fatla sa department eh, kha.
And instruct the people who are falling under his or her department.
Khorba di retiro ya bo.
That they must do their duties.
Bahol.
They are, they are being paid.
Ah, kucha.
When, when there is fire.
Ki ronari ya mulombo, ne ba duti koo hyi.
We are the ones who are going to the fire and they are, they are seated at their homes.
Ka usani, o tla wana kore ba trolutso ya hofi, ta kara kiba kada ni konziano.
Eh, tomorrow, you'll see now, eh, they are now going to hate me more because now I'm, 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 I'm trending on a, eh, eh, a chatter grounds now.
Mister Chairman. Kuta hela ba tuba, havan kuatele, havan prelo kibwale shan.
Eh, eh, you can hear them, these people are not angry for me, they are not saying I'm white.
Ki eme muna kibwala ba tuba rona.
I'm standing here.
Kikese kosi nyaa, hakidi rin twe.
I'm, I'm, I'm standing here, I'm talking on the air, oh, I'm, I'm not pretending to be a chief.
I was unanimously elected by all the FBI's in this province to represent the community.
Ke me kato yo, ke, eh, ya balon samuelo, eh, inkopile, o kene modulasitulo, eh, ya yo ne, mo province.
And my team and I, of whom I'm exceptionally proud today.
Na, lese klopa sami, seki se krotlan, kibilinkile mo krokro tata kaso.
Gave an undertaking to Kosi Ma Be and the other Kosi and all our members.
Kosi zototle, le malukar na o tle.
That we will do our work to the best of our ability.
Hori tla di ra, di roya rona, eh, manon, kamanon kro.
With our hearts and our minds.
Eh, ki, kadi, kadi pelosa rona, le di tlalo kaya zaro.
Last year, we were nice and polite and wrote letters and we begged and we pleaded.
Eh, mo wa kuno fitilem, renne, vele bonolo, re kualama kwalo, re kupa, re rapela.
This year, together with a national prosecuting authority.
Eh, wa kuno he, rona, le, eh, botati, ya bucho chisi.
Due to the fact that environmental. Due to the fact that environmental crimes have now been given such a high priority.
Yanu he, eh kavore, di ketsi tedi amanali tukulo ko, di sewa ele setla peidi yanu.
There's a policy of zero tolerance.
Yanu he, hunale mula wa ho re, haritlo le tlelela, matlakala awa ha.
Towards intransigence or lack, or lack of, or eh, laziness, or whatever you want to call it.
Ke miso, bu, bu twa kota bu twa.
Mister Chairman, when I once used the word and said that people are useless, I was told that I'm ga aru kaka.
Eh, hakena kibua kere ba tu ba, havanamule me wassepe.
But I found that.
Kipulele zo re, ki kithlapase.
But I found that word in the Oxford English Dictionary.
Eh, fela, eh, ha wakalabela mo dictionary nya, ya se kia tlapa.
Mister Chairman, I'm going to say a number here, and it's a big number.
Ki klo buaka no morofa.
Two hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and fifty-two.
Ki no more eki ba dilenge.
Two hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and fifty-two.
Emwe ki.
That is how many hectares were destroyed in Bojanaala fela.
Ki di, ki di hektaratshe di eh, di sin, sin yarile mo Bojanaala fela.
Di chiwa kibuli.
Di, di, di fishe kibuli.
That was because.
Oh, burn fire the fire.
That was because of twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-five fires.
Enelikantata ya di palo palise, ki di bua ankatsa ntsamulele.
From the first of May till the eighteenth of November.
Kani wansa May, fitlaka eighteen sa November.
Mister Chairman, that is a catastrophe.
Eh, se uhe, ki kodu.
It is not just a disaster, it's a catastrophe.
Hasi kodu enya na, ki kodu uwe dota.
The Northwest Umbrella Fire Protection Association applied to PDMC to have a state of disaster declared for our province last year.
Re na rela mo kato tuwa ankawa na, eh, re diriyo kopiya ho re reka iwe, re le eh, lefelo lelele mo koti, nka ba, lelele mo koduwe.
The only answers that I got is how not to declare the disaster.
Eh, yanu he, eh, nklaki boni kiboni eh, ki ingse si dira mura skaka iwa re le kuni.
Or why we can't declare the disaster.
Ho re, ho re nre, na, osa kono ho re, reba bolelelo ra, ape, re moma tatenro.
Or who can declare the disaster?
Ki man agatlan, are eh, na ki, eh, ki, ki, ki ratanho li fisore, re moma tati.
But nobody came to me as a farm boy.
Ha wana motu atle mo hona ya kila motuwa mo komplasi.
An twarakasi az.
Holding me by hand.
Avang bonsa ho re ki bereke yam, ho re ki hono, ho re ki dire, ho re retuse ba tu barona.
Show me how to, how to assist our people in the northwest.
That to me is total incompetence, incompetence or unwillingness to do your job as an official.
Yanu he, agat naso ki, 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 ki butlapa yobo, fitelitzin, bu, retelalale kudi ra, ki ro yaha.
The National Minister declared a state of disaster for floods.
Eh, dona ukaila eh, ma felo a, atasu senke berwalela, ho re ma felo koduwe.
And in one province, there was eh, an area where people had built illegally and they were, their houses, mi kuki abone, they were damaged by floods.
Eh, hunale eh, there were people who built eh, eh, their sheds illegally and they were affected by those floods.
What we then did on behalf of the Umbrella Fire Protection Association, we contacted the Kosi.
Rona, momu kato wa rona kibui lenta wana, re kupanti teli di Kosi.
We contacted the farmers associations.
Me kato yaba, le merui.
And we contacted all the FBI's to find out what roads were damaged by the floods.
Eh, butza, re kupanya li di FBI tso tso tlo, ho re ki ditse la di fe, se di sin twen, ki merwalela.
Honorable Chairman, honorable members, I'm reminding you now, the state of disaster was declared, but they weren't sure of the state or how much was damaged in this province.
Yanu he, eh, ma felo awa akai iwe ele, ma felo awa etenki koduwe, fela, ha wu bonu se ho re, eh, senyo innile eka ejele bukae.
Our team spent hours or days together with the different organizations and the tribal authorities.
Yanu eh, se klopa sarona, se tseri ma tati eh, di na kue etelele, ba duxana le eh, ba za akarolo baba muntenele ma khus.
And we forwarded this report to the Honorable Toko Didiza.
Ra rumela se, mo dona, kota mototleki, toko didiza.
And the provincial disaster management did not support it.
Eh, ba botati jua, di koduwe mo provincie, haba emanoke, se se tla kisite.
We now sit in there, our people have mentioned it this morning.
Yanu, sansa nrenzi, ba tu arona, saleba zefa, o tla momu so.
That you can't drive the roads to go and put out the fires.
Oka, oka ha wana, zela eutla idu san kuya, utima mulele.
But that is not the only problem, Honorable Chairman.
Hasipyo ne botaka, bole eh, si.
There are ambulances that can't drive there.
Li di ambulancea, di kono zama.
I have a picture somewhere where somebody was being carried in a wheelbarrow to an ambulance to cross the area where the roads are bad.
Yanu he, kenalese eh, se tshanto, se eh, kenalese sana se se bon samoto, ah, re tui ka kiribani eh, ai shaka kuwa, o ambulanceele nko te.
Thirty years ago, we could have blamed apartheid.
Kadi, kadi, waha zasuma maraza di fitile, nerklare molato kuwa apartheid.
Who are we blaming now?
Kumpia no he, ki man, aru alamolato.
It's not our government and it's not the political parties represented there.
Se yarona, hasi ma koko antifa.
It's officials who are too lazy to do their jobs.
Baba bu twa, yahu diraki rya wo.
We've got school buses, taxis, they can't travel, people are losing their jobs because they can't do work.
Bisi, kadi kono zama ya, ba tu, ba la kela kiba se.
And this affects our community and why am I raising this?
Se se ama se chava sarona.
Because it affects the mindset and the minds of our people.
Se se ama di khalo kanyo sa ba tu barona.
If you cannot afford to feed your family and you are suffering from depression.
Yanu he, se use, se la, se la kubagela kantenele no, eh, fitelitzin, fa, osa kono kutla melala ba la ha.
You won't mind if you set the felt on fire if your stormy falls.
Eh, awa, 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 awa na eh, katala, ha, wakasitwe ngere fa, molatla, stormy molasifisa na.
These issues are interrelated, sir.
Yanu, dilote, dia aman, wana lakatseli dia amanankayo.
Now, now that I've got it off my heart, I can give you a couple of the points in a bit of a, of a rush to cut the three hours.
Yanu he, ya agat kui lo, kathlaha, eh, nka wafa, chumi, yanu he, kitleboni klen, ho re kifukuze, di ura zetanu zo, ufinenzo.
Mister Chairman, we've got to make sure that it is statutorily included in our act, that we looked after the aged, the disabled, youth and people affected by gender based violence.
Leleba zofe pa lezi, le ba tu baba na, ba tse la, kadi kuay.
We've got to train the SAPS, the NPA.
Mapodisa di NPL.
And the magistrates, that they know what the act is about.
Eh, lebo magistrator, mayizore, mula o, ubua ka.
We have got a team that can assist with this.
Rona le se klopa se ska tushanka se.
Because when you go to the police station and you make a case, that someone is making a fire.
Ubula kiti ya eh, ho dira, yamo to afisti.
The policeman doesn't know about Act 101, or the National Environmental Management Act.
Ha itis sepe kama la o, ilila wa itis sepe, le kamela wa de eh, amanali tukul ulo.
Or even the Fire Brigade Services Act in the bylaws.
Eh, le mula wa, watamilelo, eh, le mo, melau yabo maspa.
Then the people get cross with the police because they're not doing their job.
Yanu ba tu, deba, de nakhala mapodisa ware, mapodisa ati rya wo.
It's unfair, sir, and we have to support our police.
Ha wasiya, ma sana ze, re, re, re emenoke, se police.
We have to make sure that they are empowered to assist and protect the community.
Bam, bamatla fadi we, oka tushasa cha.
Mister Chairman, the use of television, press and writing.
Ah, Mister Stock, you're taking advantage of us. Yanu eh, yanu eh.
I merely dance.
No, no, no. We, we nanisa kawa ikroza, yanu. Oh, wait, why, why say?
I've still got two hours left, sir.
Oh, no, no, no. You are, you are taking advantage of us, Lee. Ah, Stocko, yanu. Eh. We, we had agreed that you were going to make your inputs in writing. Re, re du melano, ore. Not so. It's in your saha, a ni kwa.
Yeah, but penaka is.
Maybe, maybe it's because there's TV here. My pen changed. So you realize that eh, TV is living. Yanu he, ore, o, 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 yeah. No, now already, no, it's very famous now, you are very famous now. Wa ite himo TV. In fact, the whole country knows you now. Ba weed, yanu. And they are appetized wherever they are, they are actually angry with me, yeah, because you also mix the lamb wages, you know? Yeah, but, but. And they want to hear more from you. Yeah, ba, ba ratam, bukka kawre, ba ukuwa ni puze. But we don't, but we don't want to see you with these honorable members and they are not focused. Yeah, yanu he.
Mister Chairman, I have three more points.
Can I be, can I be short? No. Can I be tlaseta? No, Mister Stock. Our reswanazi, Stock. You are going to make your submissions in writing. In fact, I have even, today is Luxar. Eh, kumpia no. The DDG, DDG of Forest is here. Re kudi retse bole mo hona. Eh, ukaidi mo kulu, watzadi kwa. Yeah, she's here. Ute. She's eh, she's very beautiful too. Ute, ni vidi omuntle. She, she's going to listen to you and you can make all these other recommendations to her and Chilika, who's also beautiful. Oh, onkana ho re na, o tla, o tla, a dimati. And all these honorable members who are here have your contacts. Yeah. You've given us your cards. Re kui lo, ufile di karanataha, wa we. So, so let's leave it here for now, Mister. Eh, aru unusetefa. Yeah, aru du melan.
Do I have a choice?
Kamwe was onta. Ah, kenale klo. Kamwe was onta, kavana wa perumuntle.
Eh, this was incognited.
With, with the spirit. Oh, you knew that you were going to appear on TV, that's why you're wearing your tie. Oh, oh, a perisintleka ro, oh, o, 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 Actually, Mister Stock, today is thirty-one minutes. So it's thirty-one plus thirty-eight of yesterday. Plus fifty-something of, uh, Friday. So, so, so you have, you have represented all these people quite sacrosanctly and sufficiently. And you're still going to make written submissions? Possibilities are that by the time we interface with the written submissions of Mister Stock, we are going to take extra three hours. So we're going to add it on top of that fifty plus thirty-one of today and thirty-eight. Correct, only one, four hours. Uh, but his inputs are quite informative and grateful, we are, we are grateful. Yeah, we have good news for you. Mohwa's Fire Fighting Brigade Services has extinguished that fire. In fact, about what kind of, uh, information you are receiving?
I want to continue with my stories because Mister Stock will be offended to say that I was cut and short while I was talking the stories, so now I'm doing the same.
Yes, now, I'm making this point because I might not be properly trained in terms of the traditions and cultures, which is much better, in fact. I don't want to say because it means I must also include honorable Bolzen and also honorable Phillips, unless you are saying that they are not properly trained on cultural issues. And it must be you saying it, not me. Uh, but I want to thank, uh, Koshi Hasiboni. I also want to thank Kosi Mabe. Maybe there are other traditional leaders who might have arrived and we were not made aware. You are also acknowledged and we appreciate your being here. Uh, uh, great appreciation goes to you, DDG. Thank you for staying with us the whole day. The entire team of parliament, your commitment is unwavering. We can't thank you more. Uh, we don't want to clap hands for a fish when it swims, it's your job. Yeah, but we are thanking you. And we want to thank all of you for being here. It's a real commitment, sitting in those chairs from eleven o'clock until four o'clock to four. Those of you who have traveled the length and breadth of the northwest with us and in particular the people of Moses Kottani. Tonight, we're still not going to rest, it's just into O R Tambo, hack. And then in popo and all of that. By the way, I'm trained, uh, my little understanding of cultural norms and standards is that once the chief has spoken, nobody else can speak, am I right? Now, I'm going to, I had requested, I had made space for both the chiefs to speak, but, uh, oh, one, one, uh, and we quickly heard the caucus here, what is a chief? And Honorable Bolzen refers to me, eh, chief, 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 you know? Uh, I refer to him, eh, chief, 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 and then we realize, eh, we're in the wrong space here. So I can't refer to him as a chief. But I agree, I have explained, uh, and I need Kosi Re. So yeah, now he can refer to me as a chief, I'm sure you understand, right? So, Kosi Mabe. Uh, I'm, I'm going to request Kosi Mabe. I'm sure, uh, uh, right, uh, who not tell, uh, what, uh, pizza, uh, learning affect, uh, give the field and fires. And then, uh, let's, uh, see, and then we'll all have honorable Bolzen to give us the closing remarks and tell us what happens beyond here. After all this process of consultations, what do we do? Kosi Mabe? Okay, uh, thanks, Chef person and your colleagues, honorable members of parliament. Really, we stood the test of time today. For us to call this day a success. It is because of all the people that have attended. We have to thank and appreciate their presence.
Thank you very much for being here.
I want, also want to appreciate the presence of my colleague, Kosi Hasiboni. But having said that. As traditional leaders of this province. From the meeting that we had. We support the bill. But you must also look at the bill because. Traditional leaders framework act has been repaired. So in, in the bill, you must now use TKLA Act Number Three of twenty nineteen. So that you should not come back and amend the same bill that you are amending today. But we'd like to thank everybody to have stood here until the end of this public hearing. But I just, I noted something which was very unusual. When we send the national anthem, one of the honorable members never stood up. Now, if honorable members disagree, God, the law of the country is a great concern. But anyway, you'll answer me outside. Okay, because I'm not a member of parliament, so you don't qualify to answer me directly. Therefore, I cannot reach a member of parliament. Uh, let's have my name, uh, the detail, uh, that is yummy throughout our country, up here in the Gula. I, I, I have a, I have a feeling that Honorable Bolzen wants to respond to the chief. I'm sure he's going to do it in a respectful manner. We don't want to come to the northwest and be accused of disrespecting the traditional leadership. Uh, Honorable Bolzen is going to give us closing remarks and tell us what happens after this consultation. What is the word for it? Just for the record, the chief did not say honorable Bolzen, he said one member of members of parliament.
Thank you, Chef person and, uh, members of the portfolio committee.
Thank you, DDG and the officials of the Department of Forestry, Fisheries and Environment. Traditional leaders. Of the northwest. And residents from across the hundred and nine villages of Moses Kottani municipality. And all but another residents. Thank you for your participation. The committee members have listened to all the inputs and submissions. We have taken notes and we will invite the Department of Forestry, Fisheries and Environment. To respond to issues raised at the public hearings. The committee will continue to deliberate on the contents of the bill. And will take into account your submissions. The committee will draft and adapt, adopt a report and debate the report in the National Assembly. The bill will be referred to the INCLP to embark on the legislative processes. Thereafter, the bill will be sent to the president to assent. And it will be implemented. Thank you very much. Now, uh, Kosi, with every, with all due respect, you've asked me in this public meeting on national television. So I can't respond to you outside when you ask me in this bathroom here. I stood for, um, Kosi Sikelere, I stood. I didn't stand for this term. To stand for this term is like waving the apartheid flag in the Democratic South African. I can never do that. I hope you accept it. Honorable Bolzen was a lecturer. I'm sure, uh, everyone here expected you to go to town, you know? And I'm happy that I'm not traveling with them in the same car. So I'm sure that this discussion will continue between Rustin Beck and Jonas Beck. Now, yes, I enter him, my guy, he closed my eyes. I'll get, I'll get, I'll get the briefing in Jonas Beck. Thank you very much, Honorable Bolzen. Um, thanks to all the participants. All the issues that you have raised are valuable to us, they are pertinent. Thank you for affording us this opportunity and respect. Hopefully, other portfolio committees and select committees of the INCLP, as they come to visit you, you would afford them the same respect. I'm, I'm half married and half not married. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Jeff. Sorry, 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 it's very, very, yes. Is that the door? Yes, there's a gentleman there at the back. So as you, as you transit to the exit door, uh, Grand Joe, uh, receive, receive something, uh, we are male.